Started. Good morning. All right, we're gonna go ahead and um start with roll call this morning on Secretary Armijo.
Morning. Melissa Armijo is here. Chair Burt?
Here.
Stephen Corio.
Yeah.
Michael Chavez. Georgina Davis.
Here.
Patricia Gibson.
Here.
Katie Manus. David Robbins. Michael Taylor. And Glenna Voight.
Here.
All right, thank you. And if we see commissioners join, we'll go ahead and make sure that they're announced when they get in. But that brings us to our item number one on our agenda this morning, which we will be calling Spotlight Moving Forward. So we, as the Executive Committee, thought it would be a good idea to do a recurring spotlight at the beginning of every work session, which is also why we're starting at nine AM moving forward. And in order to really encourage professional development amongst ourselves as commissioners, and ensuring that we're receiving the latest information and the most current up-to-date items that will be helpful with us as authorizers moving forward. So we will be doing this moving forward. So as commissioners look at the agenda, you can see what the spotlight is for that day. And it is a learning opportunity every work session. So with that being said, I'm very grateful for Leslie Kelly. She's the Behavioral Health Coordinator from the PED to be our first spotlight. And our focus this morning will be on social emotional learning. So I'm going to hand it over to you, Ms. Kelly.
Thanks. Good morning. Thank you, Chair Burt, and good morning, Commissioners.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt, Ms. Kelly. Commissioner Corio?
Yeah, thank you. My answer was that because I was wondering why we were starting at nine instead of ten. And nine's problematic on Thursdays because I've I expected it to be ten o'clock every Thursday because that's what we've done. So I just wondered if, I don't know, you check with the people and make sure they can be present, maybe the CSD people? Because that is a change, even for the people that we work with in the schools. I think for the last year and a half, except for one meeting, it's always been at ten. So I'm just curious.
Yeah, we had it at ten because of the superintendent's call. So that's why we felt this professional development that's targeted specifically for the commission is a good opportunity to start earlier so that we can still get the learning in and not extend our day even further. As we often go pretty, you know, we go well into the afternoon. So by adding an additional hour and a half, if we continued starting at ten, we just felt like, you know, sometimes we get a little burnt out at the end of Thursday. So we wanted to be able to include this professional development, knowing, you know, I think, once again, for commissioners to know and see what's there. Sometimes it may be something that you feel like you're an expert in already, and sometimes it may feel like, you know, there's something that you really don't know much about, and you can, as with anything, choose to attend or not at your discretion.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for inviting me today. I had the good fortune of running into Commissioner Voight, and and so we had a discussion about how this would be a professional development opportunity and like Chairperson Burt said, I'm the Behavioral Health Coordinator for the Public Education Department. I know some of you because I used to be in the Charter School Division prior to this. I would be lying if I said I missed the PEC meetings, but I do miss seeing some of you people. Anyway, I work in the Safe and Healthy Schools Bureau. This position was created when Governor Lujan took office. We did not have a behavioral health person in our PED prior to this, so I started this work, and then I think three months later, the pandemic occurred, so it's been really interesting times, and my position, of course, has the need and desire has been heightened. So I'm, because I'm in charge of social emotional learning, I model social emotional learning in all the presentations I do. And so I'm going to demonstrate three signature practices that we teach people, teachers, administrators to use, community folks, when they're, when they are using social emotional learning practices, and this is the first one of the signature practices, which is a welcoming activity. So in the chat, if you can just put on a scale of one to 10, rate how you, how familiar you are with social and emotional learning. One meaning you have little or no experience, 10 means you're an expert, and then also add, guesstimate, how many miles are you right now from your place of birth? Fifteen miles. An eight, a six. A three, a seven. Some people real close to home. A six, a seven. A nine, awesome. Nine, awesome, great. So not anybody completely brand new, but we range the scale of two to nine. That's that's good. I think that's everybody. Thank you for, for taking the time to do that. So the next few slides are just going to be talking about what social emotional learning is. This is a lot of text, and I apologize, but Castle, which is the collaborative for academic and social emotional learning, has really the largest body of research around social emotional learning and also the greatest amount of resources, so I often refer to it, and most everything's free. But they really talk about how social emotional learning is really an integral part of education and human development. And their definition is, and I have it on the next slide also, is that it's the process through which all young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to develop healthy identities, manage emotions, and achieve personal and collective goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain supportive relationships, and make responsible and caring decisions. And whenever I read that, I always think, what, wouldn't we, we want that for everyone, right? That is like, those are, that's an awesome definition. Those are awesome. That's a great process. We want people to, all people to have those skills and acquire them. And it also, the definition also talks about healthy identities and social emotional learning, which is part of PED's mission and vision. So it advances equity and excellence in education through partnerships with families and communities. It establishes supportive and healthy learning environments, rigorous and meaningful curriculum and instruction, and ongoing evaluation. It can address various forms of inequity and empower young people and adults to create thriving schools and contribute to safe and healthy and just communities, which these are all things that PED aspires to do also. So this is just the definition teased out. We use this definition all the time. And what I would also like to say is that when I try to describe what SEL is to people, it's not a program, it's not a, it's not a curriculum, it's not a package, it's it's not an intervention. It's a way we do business. It's a process. It's a way of being. It's changing culture. It's where relationships are the premium for adults, with adults, and adults with students, and then hopefully with students, student to student. So real cool, I'm going to go over some things about what are the benefits of SEL and what are some of the facts about SEL? And I have some research I want to show you, and when talking with Commissioner Voight, we do have a lot of schools in New Mexico that have been implementing social emotional learning practices in their schools and districts. And for those of us that have been around a while, you know, social emotional learning really isn't new. It's just now packaged in a way that we all have some, can have some common language around it and some common research around it. So it's been, you know, it's prevention, it's whole child education, it's all of those things. But this is a way now that we can, like I said, create this common, common bank of terminology and way of doing business. So it aligns totally with PED's strategic plan. The second pillar in our strategic plan is about supporting whole child education and that it's culturally responsive, it increases student learning and development by supporting schools and classrooms to engage in deeper, enriched academic learning that is integrated with social emotional learning and that is culturally and linguistically responsive. So I just want to say that it's not something new. These are practices that are already taking place. We just need to figure out, well, I need to figure out how to best support schools in taking what they're already doing and not seeing it as something separate and integrating into all the work that they are currently doing. So here's the strategy attached to that. This is part of the PED's strategic plan around social emotional learning. So it's building educators' capacity to support culturally responsive social emotional learning. Here's the objectives, ensuring all districts and charters adopt the social emotional learning framework, which I will show you later on in this presentation, and that ensure that every school provides consistent opportunities for students to cultivate, practice, and reflect on social emotional competencies. And we use the five competencies that Castle developed, which are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. And I will go over those later in the presentation also. So the key performance outcomes and what I feel like I'm really charged with supporting schools and doing is to have effective practices implemented as a result of the social emotional learning framework, and that students have gains and increased social emotional learning competencies in those five areas. So here's some of the studies. There's, there's some meta-analysis that were done involving 213 studies of all kinds of social emotional learning programs. And the science links SEL student gains to, in social emotional skills, which are those five competencies, improved attitudes about self and others in schools, it creates positive classroom behavior, and there's 11% point gain on standardized achievement test. It also reduces risks for failure by decreasing emotional distress, which is at an all-time high right now, and reducing conduct problems in the classroom and in school. So the long-lasting impact of social emotional learning is shown in this slide. And so that they looked at all different programs from within the US and outside, and kindergarten through middle school, and then looked at after the programs are completed 18 years afterwards. So the point being is that anybody can learn these skills. It doesn't, it's not based on demographics, ethnicity, those aren't factors, that, that, that is, that social emotional learning skills can be taught by anyone and learned by anyone, and that a higher social emotional competencies among students at the end of an initial intervention was the best predictor of long-term benefits. And so the benefits were, like they said, the same regardless of race, background, location. Greater academic performance, again, all the things that I talked about before, decreasing condom, conduct problems, emotional distress, and drug use. This is more important now than ever because of our workforce issues and the added workforce issues that the pandemic has placed is that when teachers have high levels of social emotional competencies, they're better able to protect themselves from burnout because they're able to develop and manage nurturing relationships with their students. And when you have better relationships with your students, they tend to behave better. They serve as behavioral role models for their students, and they are better at regulating their own emotions. So they're more likely to stay in the classroom longer. And there's a strong return on investment. The average return on investment for six evidence-based SEL programs were 11 to one. So that for every dollar that was invested in social emotional learning, there was an $11 return of savings cost from not having to incur some sort of intervention. I think this, I like, this slide is really one of my favorite slides because it's looking at social emotional skills in kindergarten, young adult outcomes. So this is the long-term effects of what happens. And so not only were kindergartners who had strong SEL competencies more likely to graduate from high school, complete a college degree, and obtain stable employment, they were less likely to end up in public housing, receive public assistance, have police involvement, or, you know, detention involvement or judicial involvement. So all the benefits, again, are well researched, and the bottom line is it improves academic outcomes and behaviors. There's long-term and global effects. It's a wise financial investment, and they help improve lifetime outcomes. And that's the distinction I make when I try to, try to talk to folks about. SEL is often used in terms of interventions in schools, and we even do it in some of our publications at PED when we talk about MLSS and things like that. But social emotional learning is not about an intervention in a point, in a point in time. So like when you're looking at a multi-tiered systems of support, or multi-level systems of support, and I do have a graphic video I can show you about how these things all intersect. But when we talk about that, we're talking about identifying a behavior or an academic issue, and we do an intervention at that point in time. Social emotional learning is about, is about creating this environment and teaching skills that will improve all these outcomes for a lifetime, right? So it's not, it's, we may do interventions that have a social emotional effect to them, but they're not SEL interventions. They're, they support those outcomes. And I hope that makes sense. It's a, it's been, there's been a lot of tension in the MLSS and SEL worlds trying to find out how do we talk to each other? And we're basically saying the same thing. We're just saying it different ways. So these are facts about SEL, and I said this before, that, that it's for everyone. Anyone can learn that, learn SEL skills, and anyone can teach SEL skills. And so it creates, learning and practicing those skills are, create a foundation for any goal you hope to achieve, whether it's school, career, family, or life, to any civic life. So it's important for, I think there's been some resistance sometimes from community folks or families thinking we're talking, we're teaching kids about feelings, and that's not our job. That's, that's the community's job or the parent's job, but we're really not teaching kids about feelings. I mean, feelings are a part of the process. We're teaching them skills, and these skills help them become more successful in all aspects of life, and most importantly, academics. So it also then also helps adults examine their own feelings in fact, and they're able to manage their stress better and collaborate with colleagues better and make better choices. And if, if stress isn't an all-time premium now, I don't know when it would, when it, when it isn't. And when I talk to adults about the importance of learning and being able to identify their own social emotional competencies, it's, it's important to say you can't, you can't give away what you don't have, right? And so it's that whole adage of putting your oxygen mask on first. I need to understand where I'm at in order to model those things. And when we teach, and many of you were teachers, you know that you can say something to students or even your own kids a million times, but the way you behave has a much bigger impact. How you model things has a much better impact. And so I can, I can talk the talk, but if I'm not walking the walk, and especially when it comes to social emotional skills, I'm not, I'm not really that believable. Again, it's all grounded in science. You have, you will have this PowerPoint, or you have it. Those links go to the brain science and the research behind it. We also talk about those things in the document we developed from PED when we launched the PED Social Emotional Learning Framework. We cite all sorts of different research that we base this framework on. But it really, we all, we all think and learn our best when we have, when we feel safe, when we feel supported, when we have connection and relationships, and opportunities to develop and practice our social, emotional, and cognitive skills. And so we learn best. It's that whole thing about, even going back to Maslow's hierarchy, you know, if you, if you don't have food, shelter, and safety, then forget it, right? And so this is just taking it up a notch, like, you know, okay, so food and shelter. Do you feel safe in school? Do you feel connected? Do you feel acknowledged? It does booster, bolster academic learning. It does increase academic performance. And 93% of teachers that were asked in this, this study that the link goes to would like a greater focus on SEL in schools because they know what it does. They know it improves academic performance and knows it makes teaching easier because their classrooms are easier to manage, and that everyone has a better attitude towards school, including the adults. I just have been working with a cohort of school leaders, and they are ready to roll. I mean, I think that some of the professional development that has occurred over the last couple of years and the focus has been on adults, which has been really hard for people to kind of swallow because everyone's burnt out, and they're saying, I don't want to go to a, I don't want to go to another workshop on self-care or, you know, even though that's actually what needs to happen. So we're looking at how do we, how do we, how do we frame this in a way that adults can really embrace and take a look at their own social emotional learning? And so we're looking at how do you model social emotional learning so your, so your students can gain competency in these skills? So SEL is very strengths-based, it's very assets-based. It gives opportunities for students and adults to appreciate and build on what they already have, their interests, their perspectives, their talents, it helped, and all the while helping reduce risky behaviors. It's not, like it said, it's not intended to control behavior, it's meant to enhance the strengths that many students already possess. And the other piece that's really powerful, when adults can speak that language to students, is that, you know, I know that my social emotional competencies sometimes are heavily influenced by what is happening in my life. And so I don't eat breakfast, I'm late to work, I had a fight with my spouse, or whatever. I show up at school in front of a classroom of students, and perhaps my self-management skills aren't at their, at their top. So, so I will be probably more easily agitated. Being able to communicate that is a really powerful thing. Like, you know what, you guys, I'm sorry, I really need to stay and check today because these things have impacted my ability to manage my emotions strong. That gives them permission to check their emotions. You know, it's like, we have a lot of expectations for students to ask for help, to be able to control their, manage their emotions, and yet we don't really show how we do that. Or oftentimes, we don't talk about how we do that, and they watch how we do that. And so it's a very, it's very powerful to have that common language. And that SEL extends across schools, homes, and communities. It's about all of us working together in this collective to create these learning experiences, environments that best promote these social, emotional, and academic skills and growth. And so it's not that we need to work in, like, and this happens a lot, is that it's some, it's a teacher who wants to do this in their classroom, and they work in isolation. We really want, I really would like for any student to walk into any school in New Mexico and feel safe, supported, and able to learn, and that their identity is valued. I'd like any family to walk into any school in New Mexico and feel that same way. And more importantly, I'd like any educator to walk into that school and feel like, this is where I can do my best work because this is where I feel supported, and this is where I feel valued. And that would really shift the education culture. So, and please, if anybody has a question, you can interrupt. I'm just not sure I can see everybody, so if someone could help me, if somebody has their hands raised, I'd really appreciate it.
I'll help you out.
Thank you. So this is the Castle Wheel. And that those, those five, I'm sorry.
Glenna has her hand up now.
Okay, go ahead. You're on your mute.
Sorry to interrupt. I was just curious as to like the foster, foster kids and the impact that is being felt by that subculture of students. When they come into a school and are recognized by the administration, at least, as being foster care students, do they receive any type of extra support? And do the foster care facilities, or I guess that would be CYFD, I don't know, do they receive any type of adult and child SEL training?
That's an excellent question, Glenna. So I'm going to talk about the second part of that first. I know from my relationships with CYFD, and especially when I was the Director of Counseling at APS, that there, there are certain requirements that foster parents have to meet in terms of professional development. And CYFD is pretty spot-on. I don't know exactly what kinds of trainings they're doing now, but I worked collaboratively with them on a project to, to, to help foster parents get training around youth mental health first aid and things like that. So it's very, it's usually very relevant, you know, because they deal with a, some, a very marginalized population that often have a lot of issues. So I know that they do training with kids and foster kids and foster parents. As far as what happens when they walk into a school, I think that is often district by district or school by school, to be honest with you. I know that there had, I was involved with some work that was done so that foster, foster, foster kids could stay in the same school that they were in, regardless of where their foster parents lived, because they often bounce from location to location. And because of district's rules and regulations, they ended up having to move school. So I know that there was some work done, maybe on the legislative level even at that time, because we were working with children's courts and some of the judges there, that they're able to stay in their school because that is like, that is such a predictor of stability. And I don't know how they're, I don't necessarily think they're identified. They usually have to float to the surface, which is unfortunate because then there's a gap of them receiving support. So I can't say if that's still happening, but that, that was sort of the lay of the land when I was at APS.
Thanks a lot.
So this is the Castle Wheel, and when, when the New Mexico Public Education Department, while I was charged with creating the social emotional learning framework, and obviously I did not do that alone, I had a very large, very diverse group of folks assist with that. There was a work group, and then there was a larger advisory group who looked at our work. And we decided to use those five, we used a lot of Castle materials, but we decided to use the five Castle competencies in our framework because they were the common competencies throughout all kinds of programs. Some people added more, some people had less. But even when they added more, they were, they fit into one of these five somehow. So we, that SEL is the core, those are the five skills that it's important in classrooms to teach and model, and intentionally weave that into curriculum, and then use an evidence-based curriculum, or weave it into instruction, I meant to say, and that it becomes part of school-wide practices and policies, and then, you know, supports family and community partnerships. So I'm just going to go through each one of these real quickly. I mean, I know I have a lot of time, but it's just a lot. So self-awareness is, you know, being able to use I-statements to describe how something makes you feel. Being aware of how your own culture and background creates a lens in which you see the world and how you interpret things, and that it creates, and understand that we have biases because of that lens, and that I'm able to notice behaviors, somebody's tone of voice, maybe their expressions and personal reactions, and that I I have to, in certain, in certain situations or ideas, I understand and notice that this, this is how someone's communicating to me, and that I do challenges as an opportunity. This is how someone's communicating to me. And that I do challenges as an opportunity to grow, develop personally and professionally. So these are both for adults and kids, but I'm going to show you the adult side later. I can recognize situations that make me feel stressed, um, the lang-, um. I pulled both the language for the adults and the kids together so that the student language is a little more simple, but, um. That I have strategies that I know how to regulate and calm down. That I'm willing to ask for help from others, and I think that's a huge one. We often in the classroom say, why didn't you ask for help? And we assume it's a skill. And so, um, then I often ask adults, do you ask for help? How good are you at that? Sometimes we're not that good at that. I'm able to manage conflict constructively by trying to find a win-win situation. Um, when I just disagree with somebody, I try to use courteous language and maintain a restor- restorative mindset. Hey, that's very adult, but it's just talking about, um, that I think about how this impacts others when I, um, when I disagree. And that it's okay to disagree. Social awareness, um, I can, uh, recognize situations that make me feel stressed, um. I might have strategies to help me deal with that. I can see the world through someone else's, um. Lens a little bit or their eyes and try to understand how they feel. Kind of, I'm able to walk a little bit in somebody else's shoes. Or I'm willing to give that a try. Um, I can respect other people even though they're not like me and I can value their perspective. And I'm willing to compromise. And again, when I disagree with somebody, I can use courteous language and maintain a restorative mindset. Relation skills, relationship skills is building, being able to build positive and productive relationships with people around me. And that I connect with people at my school or in my department who I don't normally interact with. I always tell the story of when I first was a teacher, I moved to New Mexico, um, after teaching one year. And my very first, so, so first of all, I was from Minnesota, so everyone talked about my accent, which I think you can still hear thirty-six years later. Um, Commissioner Gibson can relate to having an accent, right? So, um. So I got called a lot of things and this was a completely different culture for me. I grew up in Minneapolis, um. And I just remember going in the teacher's lounge and I was a D-level special ed teacher. I had a barracks way the heck out there. My kids always were in trouble. I never barely ever got to eat lunch with the adults. And when I did, everybody was all grouped off, you know, and I, like. I would sit at one table and be like, okay, I can't really sit here. So, you know, it's like. We as adults get in these groups and have these peer groups just like students do. And I could not penetrate it. And so this one always makes me think about that, like, nobody interacted with anybody they didn't normally interact with. So I don't want to ask that of students if I can't do that myself. So, um, getting to know others and allowing them to get to know me while kind of respecting people's boundaries and comfort levels. And I'm willing to give and receive feedback, um, and helpful feedback during collaboration. Again, I can disagree and maintain a positive relationship. That's sort of a common theme. And then responsible decision-making as I place the needs of my students before my personal or polit- political interests. I consider my ethical, legal obligations for making decisions, um. When we're talking to students about this, we, we talk about how your decision-making can affect other, other things. And that you need to think about the outcome. So when you do this, when you do the steps about responsible decision-making, you think about what the problem is. What are the possible solutions? What are the outcomes? And then what is the impact? And that's, that's that perspective. Um, I can identify problems and find creative and positive solutions. And I can gather information before I make that decision. And that, again, I understand how my choices have consequences. And then I'm going to think about how this impacts other people. I, sorry, I shouldn't have this slide in here, sorry. Um. So, though, this is the slide of the three signature practices that I'm talking about that I did. And, um, we just did a welcoming ritual, um, and then the second part is making sure that you have brain breaks in there. Which is, teachers do this all the time and transitions, um, and that there's an optimistic closure and you'll see that later. Um, but I'm about halfway through the slides, so, um, I'm gonna force you guys to do this. Um, and I gotta see stop share, um. Sorry. I know there's something to do, so I can, you can hear video, but I never remember where it is.
While you're getting that on, I just wanted to make sure, uh, to see that Commissioner Manas has joined.
Leslie, when you selected to share screen. There was a button in the lower left, I believe, the share audio. So you might want to stop sharing and then reshare.
I think, I, I appreciate, I think I did do that. So we'll see if it worked. So you guys are gonna have to stand up or turn off your cameras, so I can't see if you're not standing up. Um, so we're just gonna take a little break here.
Okay, this is brain break number one on page one. And Kevin's gonna help us out.
Yes.
Put your arms out in front of you with your hands clasped together, elbows locked. Keeping your hands together, slowly move your arms to the left of you. Good, keep your arms as straight as possible. Okay, do you feel a stretch in your shoulders?
Yes, sir.
Okay, move your arms as far as you can now, go in the other direction. Good, move them as far as possible. This is our arm stretch. Okay, now, um, if you could go back to the center. Try standing on one leg while doing this activity. Pressure. Okay, nice, well done. Okay, and back, look at the concentration on his face. Okay, excellent. Everybody stand up and brain break. Well done. Arm stretch. Good work. Both sides. Okay, try the one-leg thing now.
So long since I've been ballet.
Okay, great. That's our brain break.
Okay, that took like no time whatsoever. Um, it's easy. There's tons of them we can do with adults and, and students. Um, I'm gonna try to get out of here now, um. And research, re- research does show that it refocuses people and it gives people, um. A chance to stretch. Get a little oxygen. And come back down. So I'm about halfway through the slide, so that's why I stuck this in here. And it's an easy one. Pretty non-threatening. Again, keeping in mind, if you had students that were unable to stand up, you would have to take that into consideration. Am I screen sharing again? Oh, wait a minute. Is it the, is it showing the tree? Okay, awesome. So, um, this is the front page to the New Mexico's, um, Public Education Department's. Social, emotional learning framework. Um, and so we use the tree graphic, um, with. The green being the six components of the framework, which I'm gonna go over in a little bit. And the roots are the foundation of how we decided to use these six, these six elements that. Um, we use brain science and trauma-informed care as one of the roots, um, positive youth development. Developmental relationships and assets, restorative justice practices. And social, emotional learning. Those are the nourishment and it's all trauma-informed support for educators and school staff. To grow their S E L skills. And you can see that, I don't know if you can see that great, but there's a little apples in there that are students, students' futures. And, um, support, the branches are the supportive, um, culturally and linguistically responsive, critical practices. So this work is about equity, it's about all of those things. So I'm gonna show you, um, each component. And it's a lot, I'm just gonna say that upfront. And we created a rubric to accompany this. That schools can self-assess where, where they are with each one of these, um, competent, which each, each one of these six, um, components. So I will show you the component and then the company rubric that goes with it. And like I said, it's a self-assessment. It's not intended to ding schools or to say you failed because of this, because that's pretty anti-S E L. Um, and that becomes kind of the challenge for us is how do we? How do we have schools embrace this and do this without making it a mandate that becomes a box to check, right? Because then it doesn't, then it doesn't work that way. So the first one is, um. Positive developmental relationships that there's this learning environment that's supportive. Culturally responsive, focused on meaningful connections, relationships and community, and building community. And each one of the letters are the things that, um, are present when those things, when that is happening. When number, when that first, um, component is, um, present. So that teacher-student relationships are a priority for every adult in that building. That culturally, culture and identity are valued and explored. That culture, classroom routines and the procedures exist and that there's community building in that classroom. That extends out and that it's intentional and encouraged. So here's the rubric that goes with it. And so it talks about the, how these sheets are set up. If it has each component of, um, each letter, subcomponent of the component. What it looks like when it's fully implemented, what it looks like when it's partial, partially implemented and what it looks like when it's not implemented. And then there's resources along each, um, column. And the resource, those are all links that you will have access to that give people an idea about, okay, I'm struggling with this. What does that look like? There's actually, you know, things that teachers, um, and schools can do, activities they can do that builds that component. So, um, having been in the classroom, I've gone to many, uh, workshops or heard lots of great theories and practices. And then when you get back to your school, I'm like, what do I, now what do I do, right? This is, I really believe in this. And so we really wanted to give people, I mean, this is just clearly not even close to an exhaustive list of resources. But it gives people an idea of where to start. And these were all three grouped together, that are all four of those letter subcomponents were grouped together. That's not true for every single component. So the second one was, um, is intentional development of skills, mindsets and habits. So that students have consistent opportunities to cultivate, practice and reflect on social, emotional competencies. In a way that's developmentally appropriate and culturally responsive. So the five S E L competencies are taught, modeled and practiced, those five that we just went over. That there's explicit S E L instruction provided consistently. That all students are exposed to an age-appropriate evidence-based curriculum. And that student voice is present and encouraged. And what that looks like in the rubric, it's divided up a little, so those first two are together. Um, and again, I'm not gonna read all these for you because you'll have opportunity, you'll have this material and that's just a little too much. But, um, you know, it's really talking about the first two together, that there's dedicated time in the day where, where people can teach, model. And reflect and discuss competencies, that there's instruction provided by teachers, um, and that. It focuses and it's active and it focuses on developing these skills. And S E L instruction is connected to other opportunities for practicing and reflecting on the competencies throughout the day, so that there's these connections made. And the second one's pretty easy. It's just everyone's, um, exposed to an evidence-based S E L curriculum. There's, um, guidelines and there's also those on our website about, you know, lists of, of curriculums that are considered evidence-based. Um, and that it's not just the third through fifth graders, that it's everybody at that elementary school, if you're at an elementary school. And then last is about honoring, um, and elevating a broad range of student perspectives. Um, by engaging them all as leaders and problem solvers, um, and decision-makers. Um, and so it just really, um, improves the classroom, the school and the broader community when all students are brought in that way. Um, there's, again, there's lots of, lots of resources. Um, I really liked the elevated student voice resort, resource. But there's lots more. In fact, I'm gonna say something about that student voice because it's tricky. Um, I, they just, P D just.
Ms. Kelly?
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Gibson has her hand up.
Oh, go for it. Sorry.
Um, and thanks for acknowledging my accent. You know. I've tried, I go back east and it's like, oh my God, did I ever sound like that?
I hear you.
Hear it anymore.
I hear you.
So let me ask you, if I'm a school that's, say, struggling with this. I either, I'm not sure if I'm doing it right, or I'm pretty sure I'm not doing it right. And is it your office that you go to to say, I need help with this? Do you have resources that say, well, we can send someone in to help you out or to review? Um, I'm, you know, so schools that are struggling. How do they, how do they write themselves? And, you know, often self-assessments are great. But, you know, sometimes schools are, you know, they're not gonna. Go all the way there and say, no, we're not doing this right, but. So.
Great question. Great question. Um, so right now, um, it's me, um, and so I'm not going to schools. But, but I think it's a great question, though. It really is because, um. There are ways for people to get help right now. I think right now it's more, you know, the framework was just published in January of twenty. So it's pretty new. Um, but people are wanting to, you know, they wanna do this work because they know it's so important now more than ever. And so I have, um, the last two years provided lots of professional development for people. And again, like how people find out about it, that's always the trick. Marketing is always the trick. So, um. We, I worked with U N M Project Echo. We did two year, the last two years, we did a series of Echo for S E L. Um, and they were great. But again, you gotta hear about it, right? And so the other thing we did, um, Commissioner Gibson is with some of the federal relief dollars or it. Federal relief dollars came my way, let's just put it that way. And in two different clumps. And I was asked, what do you want to do with this? And I said, well, I want to get money to the schools so they can. You know, implement S E L practices. So we did, um, a couple, and I think I have a slide at the end about it. There was probably one point seven million dollars or around that went out to schools the last two years in the way of mini-grants, S E L mini-grants. Um, they were like between ten and fifteen thousand dollars and about a hundred. I don't know, a hundred and fifty schools total. Um, so they went to a training on the framework and all this information. And then just, my whole thing was go for low-hanging fruit. This is big work, right? So I always said, start with professional development for your staff. And if you don't have an evidence-based curriculum, start there. Little bites. Um, because if people understand the concept, it's a little easier to, to go through it. There also is a tool like a, like a, which we're gonna, and I'll talk about this later too, because there's a lot of stuff starting to happen. I'm starting to get my hand around, my arms around a little bit, like who's doing what in the state, who are some of the leaders? How can we pull these people together to support each other? Because that's really the key, what you said about. I can't go out to the school. But I can create these communities of practice or context that people can dive into and have these conversations. I just had a great one this morning at seven-thirty this morning with, with a bunch of school leaders. Great conversation. So it's starting, that's starting to happen, which is really exciting. Um, and there's also a, um, uh. An adult self-assessment of their, of your own S E L competencies. That you can kind of see where your strengths are and where you need to work on. It's very non-threatening. You don't have to share it with anybody. But I think that's a great way to say, you know, what do I understand about this for myself? Um, and, um. And again, I say, start small. You, you, you prob-, first of all, you're probably doing tons of this work. It's just not like intentional or coordinated. And, and then what, what can we take a little bite out of? Because I think it can be overwhelming. And I don't know if I answered your question or not.
Yeah, you did. Thanks.
So, um, this third one's about instruction. And that, that S E L content and objectives are integrated into rigorous instruction, oop, missing a space through interactive collaborative pedagogies. So we don't have S E L competencies or benchmarks right now. Um, there's lots of states that have done this work. And so that's sort of the next step. Um, how do we? How do we weave this into? Because it fits for every subject area. People just don't see how it fits. How do we weave this into? Because it fits for every subject area. People just don't see how it fits. Um and so. That's sort of my next step is to look at, how do we do that? And I will pull the work group and the advisory group together like. And, and we probably will just steal stuff that's already been done because it doesn't make sense to create something different unless it doesn't align with our standards. Um but we just, you know, how do we, how do we foster this academic and growth mindset? Um how do we create objectives around academics that are aligned with SEL? It's pretty easy, but I don't expect people to have to do that when it's already been done. And again, that C is all about the benchmark. Integrating it into instruction. D is a big one and that I tell people, um. Probably shouldn't start there, you know, um grading policies. Um because some of this requires a shift from the top. And some, you know, PD may have to, you know, we have to struggle and look at kind of messaging we have around. Grading and poli, grading policies and things like that. Um and. You know, project-based learning and all those kinds of things, graduate profiles, things like that. And we are starting to, we are wrestling with those things. So um grading policies is, I, I think it's really important, but it's one of those pieces that I would say like. Don't start there. Um but keep, keep, keep it in the back burner. It's, it's important.
All right, Ms. Kelly, before you keep going, we have um Commissioner Voight has her hand up. And I did want to also say that I saw Commissioner Robbins is joining.
Uh thanks Chair. So um Leslie, you were gonna mention something about student voice. I got really curious and then.
Oh, I forgot. Yes, thank you. So here's a perfect example of where the work needs to still happen, right? So um we, I just was put in touch, I had a great conversation with a new person at PD. There's a. Um and I probably won't say what his title is, right? But he's in the family and community out where Katie Avery used to be. Um family and community partnerships or something like that. And he is the student. Student liaison or something like that. Again, I'm sorry, I don't know his exact title. But there is a student, a statewide student advisory that PD has. Okay? And so we had this conversation. And my first question was, so who are those kids? How do they, are, they're representing a pretty large body of people. If there's sixteen of them for the state and are they the right kids? You know, so we had this great conversation about how you have to apply for it and, you know. So we tend to get one kind of student that fits. The role for these kinds of jo, jobs that are really important because they're the voice for everybody, but they. They don't represent everybody. And so um, you know, we, he was very open and, you know, obviously, we're not gonna tackle that first. But that's in, you know, that's, I said, how do we have true student voice when, when we see student leaders as one way? Um you know, when there's a lot of student leaders that might not be leading, um. Leading the way we want them to lead, but they are powerful student leaders. And so how do we get their voice and how do we make sure that all students are being represented? So um it's, it's a, it's tough. It's, it's, it's important though. So that's what I, that's all I was gonna say. It was just nice to have that conversation with someone who was really got it and was open to it.
Hmm, okay. Thanks a lot. Yeah, that's good to know. I didn't know there was a student advisory.
Me neither. So, so I'm gonna use them. Um so anyway, well, they're very, he caught a hold of me because the kids are really concerned about. Um student wellness and mental health. And so um, I get that. So this is the rubric that goes with um the first three letters and through sub. Sub competence or sub components. Again, this is um, some of these pieces are harder to start with than others, but um I think. The state is gonna really take a stab at um supporting schools in some of these. I don't think I know I am, so. And then this is the, the grading policy one. And there's, um, you know, I don't know, you, you guys are familiar with, because they're charter schools, the, the. The collaborative that sort of grew out of that, it's separate, but future-focused education. Um you know, they do a lot of stuff or interesting stuff around grading policies. And um, you know, I've had lots of conversations with them and. Through the Aurora Institute, that's why I put that as the, uh, one of the main resources. And so there's some innovative things happening in the state. A lot of them, it's just how do we, how do we get all the data together and how do we get all these folks? All this work highlighted. And four, um is environments filled with safety and belonging. Um that there's these conditions for belonging and emotional safety are created by being responsive to students' perspectives and needs. That we affirm all students' full identities and establishing structures that create predict, predictability and consistently. So just that environments are feel safe and that there's a, a premium on, on making sure belonging exists. Um that our school-wide discipline policies and practices are instructive, restorative and developmentally appropriate. And most importantly, equitably reinforced. Again, this is one that's um sort of a big one, but not, I mean, not to put off. Because um there's a lot of training that can be done about restorative practices and trauma-informed practices. Um our, our bureau, the safe, um, what are we, the Safe and Healthy Schools Bureau? Yeah, Safe and Healthy Schools Bureau, sorry. Um there is some legislation passed for a trauma response coordinator. Um not the best title. Um it probably should have been restorative practices coordinator, but anyway. Um that position just started in our, in our, in our bureau, which is really exciting because I'm out doing this work. And I get a lot of questions around that, around restorative practices, training, and I don't do that training. So her name is Emma Green, Emily Green, and she and I are really trying to coordinate. Because trauma-informed practices are really SEL practices, right? And so a lot of our work aligns and we're gonna really try to coordinate a bunch this year to, uh, this next school year to really. Um support schools and staff and students. Um and the last three are just all about relationships, that those are really a premium, that staff to staff, staff to student and student to student. And so here's the company rubric. There's a whole separate section for safety and belonging. Um and then school-wide discipline practices, talking a lot about how do you promote policies that. Discipline policies that promote SEL that are student-centered. And that our SEL is aligned to the school-wide systems, policies and practices. You know, and when I was first, when I first started my position and Dean Hopper was the director. He actually told me my first day that he's retiring. I'm like, thank you, but whatever. You guys know Dean, he's been around forever. He just told me, this is the three, these are the three big things I want you to focus on. I don't care how you do it, but we need to create a framework. That was one of the first things. And I really believe, and I still believe, it just didn't happen. I start, we started working on a framework, a district framework for social emotional learning. Because I really felt like some of these things could not happen without districts really understanding it. So that, you know, district central offices really, really. Believe this and live this with their employees, that school boards understood this, that hiring practices. Um and budgets were developed with this in mind. Um and that post-secondary institutions that were training teachers and counselors and whoever, that, that this was part of what they did. Because it's not currently really, a few, few places, but not, not a lot. And so I, being a systems person, thought, you know, this is the way to go. And then the pandemic happened and that was not the way to go, right? So we went right to the schools and the classrooms, which is fine. It's, it's fine. Now we can back in on out. So that would be probably a different phase when we're talking about looking at like creating a, a district framework. And then last, this is all about, you know, fostering this supportive environment where relationships are important. And that creating opportunities for these relationships.
And then. Commissioner Voight has her hand up.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, please.
Okay, thanks, Leslie. Sorry to keep interrupting you.
No, it's fine. I appreciate it.
So you mentioned Dean Hopper. Um and I remember him because he really helped out with the safe school. Plans and the wellness plans. So I was just curious, is that something now that your department supports?
He, I'm in his department. So like, he, Greg Frostad is the director of that now that Dean's gone. Um and our, our bureau does do the safe school plans and all that stuff, yes. And the wellness policy and all that, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, we're still involved in that. Um so this is kind of what I alluded to um earlier about having seen, seen how do you take what exists in SEL? And make sure that everything's integrated. So it doesn't feel like you're doing something different, that it's there, that it's. Um it's seamlessly integrated through all these academic and behavioral supports that are available to students. Um that we can identify and show how it aligns with, or what already exists, MLSS, a SAT team, PBIS. Or what, you know, whatever it is. Um that it aligns to the universal strategies like school mental health and restorative practices and our trauma-informed practices. And that it's evident in out-of-school time programming. Um I've actually presented twice at the New Mexico Out-of-School Time. Um programming conference. So they're, they're really focusing on this. And that it's integrated into how we communicate with families and community and that it becomes part of our, intentionally becomes part of our communication. And um activities and programming. So the rubric for this, um. I really need to put a link into this graphic that I'm not sure I'm gonna have time to show you guys. I will perhaps not time that. Was created with a bunch of folks around the state that really showed how SEL integrates with all of, all of these already existing systems. Um. I'll have to add that to my, this is, you know, how does it look when it's evident in out-of-school time programming? How do we, how does it look in community partnerships? And then last but not least, how do we use data to assess needed impact? So implementation and outcome data are collected and used to monitor progress towards your goals. And continuous improvement of our SEL systems, practices and policies with a focus on equity. So how do, making, making sure we identify, collect and review data, but also consider your purpose for collecting that data? Because that's the why, right? And we collect all sorts of data sometimes and then it doesn't have a purpose or make sense. Um using this framework, framework rubric to assess implementation is a great start. Using simple things like individual reflection tools for students, staffs and families whenever you're in, when you, when you're working with them. Um for practice development and also continuous improvement. It doesn't have to be fancy. Um I did, and going back to, well, I'll say that after I show this. So these are just some ways that um. Some resources to support each one of those things. I, I don't, the New Mexico SEL framework is already there. Um how do we use individual reflection tools? What are some, there's indicators of what school-wide SEL looks like. There's, there's tons of stuff already out there. It's really helpful. It's almost overwhelming um sometimes. So I try to tell people. For sure, don't go to the Castle website. Just try to look at some of these things separately. And then there's other, there's other resources also. Um so what I wanted to say about data, because when I originally talked to Commissioner Voight, you're talking about like. Could I gather some New Mexico-specific data? And I will be able to do that next year. Um because of the work that's happened and because of some of the outreach. I, I'm working with a cohort of ten districts that got mini school, mini school. Um SEL mini grants. And then I'm also working with a cohort of twelve school leaders. And they are very motivated to pilot something. Um and we're, we're. PD is gonna have to create a different student survey because the one that went out this last spring was, it was not good. Um and we didn't really talk to each other. And so um, so that was, you know, that was, that was not good for us. Um and I, and I, and, and it's okay because we can restart. We made, there are some mistakes made and that's okay. Came out of the, out of the pandemic and we should have paused. So we're gonna work this summer to get a, an appropriate. SEL survey for students because of that um strategic plan. We're, 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 we are looking, trying to look at outcomes, like our, our students see themselves with stronger SEL skills. So we need to assess that somehow. Um it's kind of tricky because assessment and SEL, you know, student SELs is sort of. Type, they're diametrically opposed somehow, but there's other states that have done this work and it's okay. We could, we're, we're gonna figure that out. As a result of that, um these, these twelve leaders wanna work together in a task force. I had them together for, for another reason. And they wanna continue to work and they wanna use the same sort of surveys for staff and students, these twelve. And create this cohort. So we have some information about when they're implementing, what they're implementing and what are the outcomes. So I'm really excited about that. Um and because as the outcomes are, the outcomes do show better attendance. Lower discipline infractions, happier teachers, um a better, people feel safer in school, adults and kids. So um I should have something next year for sure. And I'm really excited about that. Um. And as a state, we'll get more information when we get, when we get this um survey launched probably in the spring, in the fall. So I just want to tell you what, what has been happening. So we, like I said, we did launch the framework in twenty twenty. And I have to say, you know, like, I am really proud of that product because throughout the pandemic. Non-stop best practices, non-stop um guidance around how to support kids and adults. Came out from every organization. And the, the framework really aligned with all of that. And so that was really nice to do something that like, oh, this, this is what people think is good. You know, we did use best practices and research to guide us, but it was, it's really great. Um also, if you go to the Castle website, they have a page with all the states that they work with. And they took me on solo as part of their collaborating states initiative. And, and they actually reviewed the framework for, they are great. We, if you click on New Mexico, we show up now with um our framework, our, some resources, our. A rubric, everything. So that's exciting. Um. So we, then, then we have the federal relief dollars that I told you about, about sixty, one point six million. Um I funded two hundred and twenty-three SEL mini grants. So that work started the last couple of years. Um the Echo for, for SEL series through UNM. Um I had a, wrote a grant. Um from CCSSO um. And contract and was received like two hundred thousand dollars and contracted with Transforming Education. Who helped me work with ten districts and we're just finishing up that work. Um in August, last August, we launched the New Mexico SEL platform, which is um. That's the website and it's, it's curriculum, it's videos, it's resources. It, it's free. And so if you don't, if school doesn't have a curriculum, they have access to that, that platform where they can get that information there. Um there's also an awesome training in there. If you guys want access, I, I have to figure out how I can get that for you if you're interested. Because right now, if you, only, only people that, there's, there's a gated portal and an un-gated portal. So you go in and you can see the, the secretary's welcome message, but it's to get to the educator zone. Where sort of the meat of it is, the curriculum and the videos and whatnot, you have to sign in with a login. And if you, only if you have a school URL can you get in. But if you guys are interested, I can make sure that. I get your emails and I can send them to the folks at Seven Mindsets, who was, was the people we contracted with. Um and they can get you access if you're interested. So just let me know. Um and then um this spring, we, I published a course in Canvas, which is our um learning management system. Um and there's an SEL one course in there right now. Um that was, that was put up there. Um because PED is, it's not completely, uh, it's going to happen. I just don't know what it's gonna look like. But we're looking at credentialing teachers. So in order to move from level one to level two, you have to have so many credentials. And there's coursework on Canvas that you can get credentialed in. So now we create, I created this course. Sort of with that in mind, like this is a level one teacher leveling up to level two. So it's an intro to SEL course. We'll, we'll be creating another one. It's, it's actually really great. I'm really proud of it. Um I, I had help with that, obviously. So um it's um, it's available. And then there's a, a organization that was called um. SEL for US, or SEL for us. And it's um, it was our national, this national organization around. Um how do we, how do we advance social emotional learning through policy practice, et cetera? And New Mexico started its own chapter, like just six months ago maybe. Um and so they have meetings. You can, you can go, you can join that group if you want to. Um I just have to be a little careful because I'm a PD employee. And they, um, they're very policy-oriented, but they, this, 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 this. they're very policy-oriented, but they, this, 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 this group, the New Mexico chapter is not quite there yet. It's a lot of educators and leaders in the state in social-emotional learning. So, they, they have bring in great speakers. It's a really dynamic group of folks. You can kind of get a flavor for what's going on. And so I just want to, I'm, I think, I want me to just go, okay, I have a bunch of resources for you. But I want to, I want to end on this, and then we'll have time for questions. I'm gonna show this. This is, um, this is actually a New Mexico-grown poet, spoken-word artist. Her name's Mercedes Holtry. She's an educator now. And I'm gonna show you the video of her performing one of her poems that's called "Something Out of Nothing." And while you're watching this, I just wanted you to think about a couple of things. You know, this was sort of a crash course, but many of you felt pretty good about your understanding of SEL. But I want you to think about how does Mercedes demonstrate her understanding of the five SEL competencies? And you don't have to memorize them, but just thinking about that, those skills. How does she demonstrate her understanding of this in this poem? And then, think about what would classrooms, schools, districts look and feel like if all adults placed a premium on relationships, knowing and respecting their students' identities, while communicating high expectations and success for all? Because that's what she does in this, in this poem. So, let me do this. And you're gonna have to tell me if there's audio again, because I never know. And there might be some strong language, maybe just one, one word, so sorry. Oh, what's happening? Skip ads.
I was sitting in a desk in a class of a school in the city of Albuquerque, New Mexico. I went to La Washa, formerly known as the infamous ghetto public school, Washington Junior High, located between downtown and the heart of the Baladas community. It was Spanish class. The teacher took role. Maria Chavez.
This is the wrong one! Sorry. Let me get out of here. It's good, but this is the wrong one. I've asked you the wrong, uh, let's see. No. Okay, well, I'm just gonna, I don't know why this is not that one. Yeah, this is it. Okay.
This is Lumen, the first device for hacking your metabolism. With just one breath, Lumen tells you what you're currently burning for energy: carbs or body fat. So you can see what's going on with your metabolism and
I hand them popsicle sticks, string, and glue, and tell them, "Make something of it." Their smallish brains occupied for about a good 30 minutes, generating methods of creation. They hand me these funky crafted spider web thingamabobs. And answer the question before I can ask it. They're dream catchers, Miss Mercedes. A smile at their pride. How much joy they get knowing they created something out of nothing. You see, these kids, these inner-city kids do this often. Create something out of nothing. They're used to getting secondhand shit and then being told to be thankful for it, to make it work, to salvage everything. Unlike programs in Paradise Hills, Taylor Ranch, and Rio Rancho, we know nothing brand new. I wake up every morning to come work in an icebox. The gym heater broken leaves them bundled in big jackets of basketballs flat. Games from Goodwill fill the old recycled shelves donated years ago. They fight over a deck of cards missing two jacks and a deuce. Press the marker to the paper to get the last bit of color. Search for at least one sharpened colored pencil in a bucket full of broken ones because our pencil sharpener is broken, our ball pump broken, our chairs broken, our books broken. Their spirits are not yet broken. My heart breaks for them sometimes. I tell them, "Finish your homework so you can go to college, so you can get a job, so you don't end up a scummy-bummy-hobo." And as they giggle at my attempts to be funny, a fifth grader Amelia raises her hand for the first time and says, "Miss Mercedes, I've been homeless before. It's like, really not that fun." Speechless and stupid, I apologize. I apologize for being ignorant to the fact that some of these kids know struggle better than their ABCs. Out of the 36 that attend, five are raised by grandparents, 15 are raised by single mothers, 18 are here on welfare contracts, too. Our foster kids and all of them know what it means to make something of it because it's what they will have to do for the rest of their lives. They are brilliant in this way. They are thankful for seconds of snack. Angry when they fistfight, embarrassed because they can't read very well. Frustrated when I tell them to finish their homework, angry when I tell them to try harder, as if they are not trying hard enough, but happy when they finally break through to success. I did it, Miss Mercedes! I did it! I did it! I did it! I tell them, "I told you so!" See what happens when you're not a quitter, when you don't give up, never give in, never give in to your environment. If your environment tells you, you can only be its product. Don't give in to poverty, to a system that gives you nothing. Build something. Keep making dream catchers out of popsicle sticks. Let dreams be the foundation for built realities. Keep building and keep moving and keep rising. And remember, your capability for making something out of nothing is going to take you far in life. So make something of it.
So, what do you think she knows of the competencies? What did she, what did she do in there that made you know she knew them? And you can just unmute. I don't, unless you have to call on for the meeting order.
No, that's okay. People can just jump in on that. You asked a question.
So how did she, how did she demonstrate, whoops, sorry, the competencies, her understanding of them? She had awareness of, of that culture, of that environment. And what happened, like, the beautiful, most beautiful thing to me about that is, when that student raised her hand for the first time, and Mercedes is like, whoa. And what did she do? She apologized. I mean, it's okay for us as adults to make mistakes. Like, that's part of the learning process. That's part of understanding, you know, our skill set, right? Yeah, she knew where they came from. And what was so beautiful and why I put the second thing in there was that she still had high expectations of all of these kids, and she knew exactly where they came from in demonstrating this poem. And, and I think that's a beautiful demonstration of that. Because I think, you know, we all, as educators, try to have high expectations of our kids, but often say, "But this." And it's one thing to know where they come from, it's another thing to understand it and to acknowledge it and then work with it. So, I just, we had her come in, she's, she's awesome. And I just think that she had rela, she understood the, the value of relationships big time and understanding her, her, her students' identity and culture, for sure. So, I just have a bunch of resource links on here. I, I will put the link in the chat. Somebody asked for that, for the Mercedes. Let me figure out how to do that. And I will stand for questions. Or comments.
Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Voight?
Thanks. You know, Leslie, thanks so much for this. It was, I, you know, I've had a lot of familiarity and work with SEL, but I, I didn't realize how, how vast the resources are and the work that's being done. It's, I'm just so blown away by what's been done. You know, I mean, I mean, it, can you, can you validate, or are you able to say, like, SEL is gonna be around for a long, long time? And I think COVID kind of put it all on our face. This is not something that's a trend, I don't feel. I feel this is something that's so much needed. And, and I've heard teachers even say, well, why do we have to do this? This is, this is something that parents should be teaching their kids at home. How come teachers are teaching these values or whatever to, to kids? I just want to teach my subject area. You know, I mean, there's, there's been a shift, as we know, in our society, for whatever reason. But people are not the same. And kids are not the same kids that, that we were when we were kids in the 60s and 70s. So, is there something that you can say to that as far as, how, how education, society, and general families? We all know that these things have changed. But this speaks to why social-emotional learning is so important in schools. Yeah, I appreciate that. And there has been a shift. I think people see the need, but also aren't quite sure what it means, right? And so, and that it's sort of a mystery and sometimes misconstrued. But kids don't come to school with the skill sets. They don't. And that, and, and we are responsible for, you know, you think about what, what's changed in education over the last even just 75 years, you know? They now get often three meals a day at school, they get clothes from school, they get daycare at school, they get healthcare at school, you know? So, so this is not more, this is just acknowledging that they're not coming necessarily with the skill set. And it's, the research is clear. If they have these things and we have these relationships, our lives will be better. Like, we'll have less trouble teaching, we'll have fewer interruptions, we'll have better attendance, and they will be better human beings. They will do better in school, they have more academic success, they will have more life success. It's just simple, it's clear. And so I think part of the problem is just demystifying it all and also giving people permission to do this. I really do. I just think it's like, you know, this is important. I have sort of wished, in being part of the recovery and reentry documents that PED put together, I made a lot of recommendations around resetting. Like, this is, this is a chance that, you know, when we went from remote to in-person, we had a huge opportunity to reset. We always do. But we need to acknowledge what happened, not just for students, but more so for adults. Like, you think about teachers that never got to say goodbye to other staff people that disappeared. They didn't get to say goodbye to kids. A new kid comes into a school, like, the first time they show up and they're in-person, they didn't know anybody. And then what went on in our personal lives? People had, you know, illness, death, employment issues, you know, on and on and on. And so I just think that it's okay to, it's okay to stop and reset and acknowledge this stuff that we all, like, and, and we all experienced it differently. Some of it was traumatic for some people, and some of it wasn't. But that's okay, that's okay. And now we're seeing, you know, the Secretary General came out saying that we have a national mental health crisis with kids in school. It's, it's, it is. And so, we can't make it worse by doing this. Let's just put it that way. So, I just think it needs to be dismissed, mystified, and people need to be given permission. Like, it's okay for you to be a human being in front of your kids with appropriate boundaries, right? And I, and I told people, I taught D-level and Special Ed at John Adams Middle School when I first moved here, right? Those kids knew so much about me, I had no idea. They knew when I got new clothes, because they still, they watched me every day. They knew when I got my haircut. I was a smoker then. They knew I smoked because I smelled like smoke. I mean, they knew everything about me. And so, why not, why not acknowledge that, right? You know, like, I pretend like I'm not something. They know, they smell an imposter 900 miles away, right? So, again, with appropriate brown, boundaries, but it's okay to be human. And, and we're not taught that. We're not, I was not taught that in a teacher education program. I was taught, this is how you have to get control and respect. And it wasn't that way. And my kids came to work, my kids came to me with a lot, a lot, a life I never lived, right? So, it's, those relationships are important.
Commissioner Armio?
Hi, thanks for that. So, I just wanted, yeah, thank you to Leslie for that entire presentation. It was great. It's actually sort of unfortunate that it took a global pandemic for us to, to have to reset. And, and, you know, SEL should have been part of, part of education, you know, for a long time already. You know, I'm just, there's just certain things that resonated with me as, as far as what you mentioned, you know, just, just within that, that last statement that you met, that you talked about. And one of the things that I think about is, you know, just people's basic human needs being met. You know, their, kids come to school and, and you don't, like you said, they know exactly what you're doing, but you have so many in a class, you can't, you can't necessarily know each child. So, you know, that, that's just huge for me. And, you know, I just, I just thank you for this work, and I think, and I, and I, it is so much needed. And, yeah, I appreciate your time today. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. You know, I've been working in education and/or behavioral health, or a combination of, for 37 years, 36, 37 years, 38 years. And this is the first time in my career that, and I sort of was mad about it. The global pandemic finally brought it to the top. But I'm also grateful because I've been at the table and a lot of discussions. I see some shifts. I just hope it continues, and I hope that, that it's not, not linked to federal relief dollars. I hope that, you know, you know, I, I kind of like, will take whatever I can get, sort of. But it, it, it is a shame, but it also is, it's okay. It's all right. You know, as long as it's, it continues to be a priority after the pandemic, I'm good. And I cannot copy that, that link to that. But you know what, Commissioner? You will have it because it'll be in the presentation. There's a slide with just the link on it.
I think I saw that. Thank you so much.
Sorry about that.
No, no, no worries. Thank you.
I was just pleased with my, my skills that, that had actually worked out. I only had one fumble, so that, that's good.
All right, before I go back to you, Commissioner Voight, I'm gonna see if anyone else wants to speak for the first time. And then I do have something to say. And then I'll go to you, Commissioner Voight. All right, um, so I have, I have several questions. So I am, I am grateful for this. And I actually do think, like Commissioner Voight said, I think, and, and you said during the presentation, I think a lot of schools are doing this and have been doing it for a, actually for a really long time, and it will continue for a very long time into the future. Even if it's something as simple as, like, you know, like, time management, right? Like, that's part of self-management. So I mean, I think there's been elements for forever, but it makes sense that it's structured and, and able to have data behind it as well, because it is one of those things that schools do. But, you know, there, to know the impact of it, like, to actually have the data of the impact of doing it well, is really encouraging about it. And so I have several questions that are gonna be specific about our role as authorizers in this. And first, do you feel like with your, your engagement with schools and folks in the schools, do you feel like schools are, in, like, I mean, and I'm talking about state charters, like, with all state charters, do you feel like they'd be in a place to be ready to be rated and assessed on social-emotional learning? Starting like next school year?
Well, and if you're referring to the self-assessment, the school self-assessment rubric, or?
No, so I would say it'd be more like an external assessment that's done to the school to see how well they're doing social-emotional learning.
Um, I mean, I don't know how, how, what I think about that, but I, I think that whether they're ready or not, it's gonna show where they're at, right? And so that might be, as long as the information is being, being used to help inform, like, this is, this is where our strengths are, or this is where our gaps are, or this is, you know, maybe we could focus on that area. If I think it's used, if, if it's used in a way to help schools build strengths, that's great. that's great. Um, so I, I don't think you have to be doing a whole lot of it to assess where you're at. I think, and I also don't know if like, like you said, it does, it's been happening for years and decades. And sometimes it happens just in a classroom. And so, does an administrator even know? Like, depending on how they get that, who takes it, does the administrator really know that that's what this teacher is doing? Other than this teacher has great student behavior and command of her class and good outcomes? Do they know that that's directly linked? I don't know. So there may, there probably needs to be some more education that needs to take place. Um, I know I have even education that needs to take place in PED. So um, so I'm not sure I can answer that. I didn't try to dodge it, but um,
Well, I mean, I, I heard you say in the presentation that you were really concerned about, like, utilizing the framework to, like, ding schools. Um, that that would, that would not be um, that would not be received well, and it wouldn't be productive to schools trying to do this or starting it up. Um, so that, I think that's what, I, like, I heard you say that part, and so.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that it's, oh, as long as, like, again, the intent is, we wanna see, like, we, we wanna do this comprehensive thing to see where your school sits. As long as it really can take a realistic snapshot and um, can, is used to help support moving forward and is very asset-based. And I'm like, I fall for that. But when schools get, get, get assessed on so many things and there's so many have-tos, that if, I'm just, my fear is that I don't want this to be viewed as a have-to, because then it takes the value out of it. And it, it's very anti-SCL, you know, it's sort of like, oh, then it becomes, I know, like, even with our safe school plans and stuff like that checkbox, you know, like, people just gotta do what they gotta do. It's, it's not that it's not important. It's just there's so much they have to do. So that, that's my, that's my worry.
So if, if um, we use the PEC, we, we do value, I, I do believe the PEC is a whole, has you know, shown a lot of value towards this and like wanting to really encourage this, like, I heard you say, like, give, give folks permission to do this, right? Like, I, I think that there's, there definitely is a lot of that sentiment behind it. Um, so if, if this, if the PEC requires that all of our state charters implement social emotional learning into their schools, and I'm a school and I'm like, yeah, I don't know if we've been doing this. Like, I don't know where we're at at this. This is kind of new for me. You know, they, they, maybe they're at the beginning of it. Um, how costly and time, both in, in money and time, is it to get them started? And how long does it usually take before you can start seeing it in, in a effective way happen in the school?
You know, I'm gonna say that I think even, you know, even if a school took the self-assessment and like committed to like having like a committee or, you know, like a group of folks, look at this um, and really like looked at it seriously, I, I, I don't think it's that hard. And I don't think, then it, it becomes just like, how do that, how do they get support? And where do they start building? Um, and in terms of how, how long it takes, I don't have the answer to that, but I know that people can see differences in a year. I do. I know they can. Um, I, even if it's just starting to implement curriculum at, in every grade level. And they do it in a way that's not the school counselor going into every class, because then the school counselor is the only one that speaks that language to the kids, right? Um, and so it, it, it requires some staff buy-in. It really does. Um, but I think you can see, I think you see some changes right away. I really do. I think it, it shifts a climate.
And what, what is the most, what do you think is the most effective way to measure the effectiveness of social emotional learning in a school? Like, how, what is the best way to assess if they're doing a good job at it?
So I'm not assessed how they're doing it in a school or whether they're doing a good job or not. And so there's a link in there that, and I'm, and again, I'm not dodging your question. Um, but you know, the people that have done a ton of research around this, there's a link, I think, that I put in there that's, that's, um, it's either on the rubric or in, in the last slides or both. That is um, indicators of, of school-wide SCL. Um, so it, it's like ten things that are indicators of school-wide SCL. Many of those things are in our rubric too. But I would give that a look. Um, and then if there's um, other tools that you're interested in, I can reach out to folks. If you, if you give me like a list of questions, like, you know, like, is there some, is there some smaller walkthrough we could do or, you know, because that's essentially what this tool is. It's a walkthrough. Um, and when these things are present, you know that you have comprehensive SCL going on in your school. Um, so um, yeah, so I, and again, when it comes to specific tools, that's where I'm not as well-versed, but I have a lot of, of um, colleagues and um, national experts I'm in touch with that I reach out to when it comes to some of these specifics. Because there's other states that have already done this stuff. There's no reason to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, I, I always appreciate that whenever we can acknowledge that, like, don't just make up stuff. And so is there any way could you, would you be able to provide a list? I, I saw that there's quite a few schools that got those um, micro grants. Would you be able to provide um, if there were any state charters?
Yeah.
Applied and, and received that grant and let us know who those folks are? Um, or, and then even, and if, like, I know you said you had a cohort of twelve school leaders. I don't know if any of those are state charters, like, if any, any state charters are participating with the work that you're doing, I think it'd be great for us to know. Um, and then my last question, am I correct that there's no, right now, the PED doesn't have any requirement for SCL? It's, it's more of like opting in and then providing resources to folks who are, are expressing interest. And then you're trying to get the word out that there are resources out there and available. That's kind of where the PED is at in that part?
Yeah, and I think that as, what I'm really hoping for is next year, when we do get, and I get some more targeted information and some data from working with some of these cohorts of people that, that I've identified, that we've, you know, I've worked with um, and kind of do some more targeted stuff. I think then we'll be able to say, like, this is what works. Um, instead of just like saying everyone should, everyone has to do this, or everyone has to do that. I mean, if we were to do anything, I think we should say everyone has to have a, a evidence-based SCL curriculum they're using at their school all grade levels. Like, that to me is a no-brainer, but um, but we're not quite there yet. Um, and, and that's okay. I, I, I think, I, I'd rather be thoughtful and kind of see what's happening and what's working in our state and what school leaders have bought into and support before we start, you know, kind of cramming stuff down people's throats. Because it does require some buy-in. It really does. And, and if the leader does not buy into it, which I will say this, charter schools tend to be um, way easier to work with and way more on board with these kinds of things. Um, because often they've chartered because they want to do stuff differently, right? And so um, that was my experience at a charter school. That was my experience in the charter school office. So they're often the people I go to, because they're already doing all this stuff. Um, and I, and I will get you a list of the state charters that I've been working with.
All right, my last question. If the PEC wants to be forefront leaders in this and do, do have a requirement that all state charters have an evidence-based SCL curriculum in all grades or something along those lines, I hear like, do you have some kind of social emotional learning requirement for our state charters? What is the capacity for them to receive support in successfully doing that, this upcoming, not maybe this upcoming school, but at least the next school year after that?
Um, that's an excellent question. And by support, um, well, first of all, they'd have to have the resources to purchase it, right? Um, there's enough, I don't think it's that hard. I really don't. I think that lots of, lots of the curriculums provide, if you purchase them, they have their own PD they provide for folks, or they don't require it. It's just, um, you know, I've really only personally taught two different curriculums and um, and it's not, it's not rocket science, but sometimes it does, there is a cost and there is a cost for professional development. That's about it. Um, it would take maybe thinking about how we're gonna integrate this into our school. What's it gonna, it would take more thought on the school's part, like, how are they gonna, how do they fit this in? How do they have dedicated time? You know, all that stuff.
Okay, thanks. Those are all my questions.
You're welcome.
Uh, Glenna, you're up next.
I, we were on the same brave, the brainwave, thanks, Becca, because I was gonna also ask about this with our heads full of performance framework uh, workings. We just talked about SCL and climate and school culture and the survey. So it was interesting to hear from you, and I know we're running short on time, right? But it's really interesting to hear from you, Leslie, that you felt the survey did not really fully address SCL. I'm just gonna make that statement and, and name that um, that that's what I heard you say. Um, I think, because I, I felt it, I didn't feel that it really dug in either. Um, but my question then that um, Becca didn't cover, but thanks for addressing all those points, Becca, is um, the self-assessment that the schools do within the SCL framework, where does that go, that self-assessment?
Well, right now, the only people that have been required to do it are the people that receive money through the mini-grants.
Okay.
And they had to return that to me. But I'm, actually have a meeting today. Um, we're working on getting an online tool, so that's, that it can be, it can be updated, it can be stored um, through PED.
Okay, wow. So things are really evolving in your, in your orbit over there. So that's,
Yeah.
That's exciting. That's exciting. I think, um, and Becca, you know what? We can uh, talk about this further on our project team, but looking at this SCL framework, I think would be a good next step for our project team. Thanks, Leslie. You've been so informative.
Thank you for having me.
I don't see any other, I don't see any other hands up, so thank you for your time this morning. We appreciate it.
You're so welcome. Y'all have a great day.
Thanks.
Bye.
All right, that will move us to um, item number two, discussions of forms project. This is group one. Um, amendment forms in standard manner to draft amendment forms and policies. And I will hand it over to uh, Ms. Barnes to lead us on this item.
Just wanna check in, it, it kind of is a little bit of a longer item. Do we want to take a break or are we good?
Um, I would prefer folks, like, if you need to use the restroom, go get a drink of water, just do it. Um, and then we'll take a lunch break, a thirty-minute lunch break at, hopefully after this. Okay. Commissioner Gibson?
Well, the only problem with that is we miss discussion. If we get up and leave and take our own breaks and we miss, there's gaps there. And like we just had the, in, in our professional development, that resetting is, you know, a five-minute resetting is just really, I think, important for folks.
Commissioner Correa?
Um, I would agree. Um, why don't we take, you know, six, seven minutes or whatever time you determine to stand, stretch, go to the restroom, get another cup of coffee, whatever.
All right, I will come back. I, I am going to be very strict on it, because it will save five minutes, but then it goes fifteen minutes. So we're gonna come back at ten fifty. If you're not here, we are starting regardless. So that'll be my compromise. All right, Julia, as soon as you're ready.
I am ready. So um, we are starting to roll out the project to review the forms. Um, and it's going to be a project that is gonna be rolled out over months. And every time we look at any group of forms, we are going to use the same um, process, which is that it will be draft documents will be in a working session one month. It'll be viewed at a working session the next month and voted on the next day. So two working sessions for any set of forms, thirty days that they're posted and online. And hopefully get input on them um, and to roll it out. And to roll it out that way. I think there's going to be at least two groups and maybe three and possibly four. Commissioners Gibson and Creo, do you have your hands up to say something now?
Oh, I have a question for you. Working session and then working session vote the following month. But is it going to be on the agenda as a first reading? The work, the meeting after the first work session? Because then it would seem like the second reading would be that following month and then the vote.
Notic, it's it's only on a P E C meeting once for a vote after two working sessions. So it's on, so for example, we're gonna launch one next month. It is going to be on the June working session, the July working session, and a July vote. We are not pushing it out sixty days.
So I don't wanna understand, so in this, even though we haven't, I think, determined how we're going to be aligned with state rules and regs and all the rest of that yet, this is in keeping with that procedure, is that correct?
Exactly.
All right, thank you.
What we've been looking at, though, and I think that C S D is looking at this in terms of how we are getting information out to the public, how things are relevant and getting the most relevant information to you, this is the same thing. So there's three things I want to discuss. One is the overarching way that I would like to propose people know what's going on and how they can participate. The second is to start to look and have a conversation about the direction you want to go on amendment forms, because there's something like thirty-five up there, thirty-five documents up there. And the third one, the third thing I want to look at is, you know, a little bit of detail, although we have plenty more time to talk about it in the next two working sessions about the forums and kind of what their purposes are. So I wanna start with an overview that I proposed to the E C. Is to have a link to a Google Drive document that anyone can look at that has every project that you have launched and it all, because a lot of the questions I get is where did this come from? And when did you vote on it? And when did it start? So if I can share my screen. I would like to propose, can you see it, what's happening at the P E C? I would like to propose this overarching document. It's a Google document that C S D, the executive committee, I can change it, that it updates what we're doing. And so it's not cluttering the the page of the website, but it's a link that goes to a Google document, so if somebody wants to get involved, it tells them how and where to do that. So right now, we have actually four four different things that we're looking at. On the pro, on the forms project, the performance framework already has a working group. The revision of the contract is gonna start this summer. We're gonna look at the intervention ladder, it's right now embedded into the contract, pull it out and have a standard procedure that we look at for all cases. That may end up as a rule if we get past that process in a way we're comfortable with. And then the amendment forms are actually what we're starting with first, but it's just the the way, because the performance framework got launched first, we're hoping to get a lot of people in there, we've listed that first. We have a renewing school key dates that you guys decided, and there's timelines for that. And then we started the M O U review in last month. So below it is the document that says what the project is that we're doing, where you can find the vote from the P E C, why we're doing it, what we're trying to do, and then a detailed project plan. So for example, under the performance framework, we have the latest draft that's already up there. I just went and pulled everything into one document, and honestly, if I was a school coming in saying I want to be involved, it would have been hard for me to go to this page and then that page and this link and then that link. Where do I find the various people? And so it pulls everything together. So here's the latest draft, if there's a new draft and it's a different link, we'll just change it in this document. So this is a dynamic document. Tells them how to reach the chair, how to reach Karina, and then the working group members. All of this is in other places on the website, but it just tells you how you're gonna get there and then how to reach out. And then if you're interested in being involved, this pulls everything together. Under the plan that is proposed here, the performance framework is gonna be touched twice in final form. If it's ready by the eighteenth of August, it'll be the August work session, a September work session. And here's, this links you back to the agendas for the P E C. This is a forum where you can provide comments. So if I wanted to get involved in the performance frameworks, I could go here, click, find someone, find where I wanted to go, find how I wanted to be involved, and then find the actual times that it's gonna be considered in more final form. Same thing with the contract, what we're doing, why we're doing it, how to get involved. We are, again, it's it's intended to be this July and August. And as soon as we we should have a draft in early July, that information will be populated, so it's a dynamic document. The intervention ladder, the same thing. And then the amendments forms. The amendment forms lists what we're doing right now, which is here we are right here, which is we're having a general conversation about the process in general. Documents will be ready and posted for anyone to see, both the June and July meetings. And then because there were so many amendment forms, maybe we'll do it all in one meeting. Maybe we'll do it in a in a second group, but every time it's launched, it's the same way. The renewing school key dates is another thing that I thought people might be interested in. That was voted on by the P E C by motion on April eighth, that's the link, that's the vote. These are the dates that were established and how they were established and why. So there's somebody wanted to come in and see, I'm a renewing school and I want to see where this is and I want to see what the timeline is, it's here. And then we actually started an M O U review. That was done into working sessions. We've got a red line coming up right now. So we've actually had, this will be the third time that there's input, but the first time with a red line review. And then if more steps are determined, we'll add that there. So this overarching document will be posted with a link online on the front page. That'll take anyone to go see what we're doing and how we're doing it, tries to collect it and combine it. I also suggest that that be posted on agendas at the bottom of the agenda. If you're interested in what's going on and in seeing it, you can click on that. It can go out to schools consistently. Here's where you can find this information, so that we're constantly sending people to the same place, the same source, but it's an internal Google Drive document. It doesn't require, I think, Karina, correct me, but I think four people are involved in getting something posted to the website. So this wouldn't require four people, this would just require anyone who says, oh, this deadline has changed, or we've added this thing there. Because we are looking to ask people to really engage in the process, it just seemed like it made some sense. Thoughts on that?
Commissioner Davis?
How do we find this Google Drive?
So it's the Google Drive. I'll answer it as a commissioner, and then I'll answer it in general. So it's the Google Drive we use every single meeting. It's actually a folder number nine. And that has the project plans, but for example, the link is right here. So this, I don't know if I can do it online. Yeah.
The the links on the agenda, but I actually don't think it's like. Yeah.
It should be in, mine's act, I just did it.
Okay, good.
Mine's an active link. And it'll be an.
The bottom of the agenda, moving.
Every single time.
So it's available throughout the month, is that what you're saying?
It's available anytime, any day.
Okay, so that that if we find that link, then we can always get the information. Okay, thank you.
Yes, and I just wanted to show you where I want to put it. And then.
I don't know if you know, not sharing your screen anymore.
Yeah, I'll share it again. So and then Commissioner Davis, this is where it's gonna be, this is the front page of the P E C. This is the very front page where the meeting calendar and everything is. I think.
Julia, you're not sharing your screen.
Oh, I should share the screen, sorry, thank you. Your button. All right, this is the P E C main website. This is the first page that you get to when you type in P E C. This is where they can find who you are, the meeting calendar. We are, I think, gonna put the link right here, because right now, this is just about the performance framework. But I think we'll do the link to the document that lets you go there. And if if the working group wants to keep those two links to the performance framework, that's okay, it would be a duplicate source. So it would be posted here. It would be, the link would be posted on the bottom of the agendas. And the document would be updated if anything changes. But actually, in a lot of ways, what, once you all have been voting on something, we've been doing a timeline from that. And then working to meet that timeline. And as Commissioner Creo started out, we need a timeline, because we need a first meeting and a second meeting and a vote, so you can start to roll it out.
Thank you.
Commissioner Voight?
Thanks, so I think this is great for transparency and for everyone to see what we're working on. I just, I suspicion, though, that schools, I mean, I would love for schools to feel that they can openly advocate or disagree or, you know, that type of thing, and have that open trusting dialogue. But I suspicion that it's gonna fall on school attorneys. A school's gonna see something. And then they're not gonna agree with whatever work is being done, or they're gonna want, you know, some converse input or something. And I just suspicion that the attorneys are gonna be the ones to come forward. Not that it matters to us, but I'm just saying, just an F Y I.
Sure, and obviously, we're actively asking the attorneys to get involved in redrafting the contract.
Sure, it's just costly. Schools pay for their attorneys at every level. So just, you know, just know, we know that, so just F Y I. That's all.
And I guess the last thing I'll say about that is we are looking to finalize documents for use for a long period of time. That I think, I think it's been expensive and time-consuming to go back and go back and go back. And I think that we can build on the work that you've already done. Build on the work that you're continuing to do. But I think your working group and the point of the contract and, you know, the point of frankly, following the State Rules Act is to embed things in a more link, you know, time for a longer period of time. And let them, let them have a fact, you know?
Yeah, I get it. Yeah, I think it's great. It's hopefully foundation work that we're doing right now, it's foundation building. Great, thanks.
Commissioner Robbins?
Thank you. I mean, I I agree with what Ms. Barnes said, that we we need to have this. But also with the idea, I don't want school council to dictate. If they have a problem with a clause that the commission is requiring, you know, it's it's a privilege to have a charter school, it's not a right. And if the commission wants certain things in the contract, we shouldn't allow school council to dictate P E C policy and P E C direction. We need to be very careful of that, because again, although we have, you know, one legal practice that advises a a large portion of charter schools, it's not the only one. And like, you know, the old adage, I'm an economist, right? It's my undergraduate, you can get three economists together and have four opinions. Okay? You can get four or five attorneys together and have ten opinions. I mean, it, I mean, because it's it's all about advocacy rather than what is right from the commission's standpoint. And if we feel it's something that's necessary with our legal counsel's guidance, so long as we're meeting and following state rules, statute, things like that. If we want to have something in there and it's not prohibited by statute, I think we have the right to have it in there, even though an attorney may object to it. We have to understand, the attorneys are representing their clients to make their client's job as easy as possible. Our responsibility is to ensure the education of those students in those charter schools. So we need to make sure that, you know, contracts are aligned that way. I think Ms. Barnes has done a good job, and our previous councils have done a good job in advising us.
Okay, I want to make sure we're staying on topic, because we're talking about the the form itself, not necessarily the, like, what's going on in the projects right now. So I want to make sure we stay on track, too, with what Ms. Barnes is, what we need to be discussing during this work session today. Commissioner Voight? You're on mute.
Thank you. I think the intent of this really is about transparency and communication. It's not, there's not a push-pull power play going on here, it's really about just sharing our work. And, you know, I think feedback and input is always good for learning. And, you know, we don't know everything there is to know. And I think that with the guidance of Ms. Barnes, I think she's done a really good job in in this lift to try to to get us to this point that we can be more transparent.
Commissioner Gibson?
So I think the spirit of what Glenna was saying was, schools may feel a little uncomfortable with coming forward and being in, being there all by themselves with a concern and may turn to the attorneys as a coordinated effort, so that they're not standing out as, you know, a malcontent and saying, oh, I don't think this is necessarily a good thing. But I think important that with the subcommittees, the contact to the commissioners that are on it, I think schools have maybe a little bit greater level of comfort in contacting an individual commissioner on their own, or at least like in your district. I know mine don't have any problem with giving me a what-for on on something. So I think it's also on us to make sure that there's a level of comfort within our district for our charters, so that they don't have to. If they feel uncomfortable coming to a full public meeting or sending it to C S D, because it might become a little more public to addressing that privately to us. I I think that's the spirit that that was in, and hopefully, that's where the input will continue to be to us. Because I think that is important to to get that. I think it's important to hear that other side, because it helps us to make sure that we've got a better informed policies and procedures. And sorry if I'm talking to you, Glenna.
The one point, though, that's right along the line of what Commissioner Gibson just said is I wanted a document that pulled everything together. What are we doing, why are we doing it, what are the commissions? What are we doing? Why are we doing it? What did the commission say? What is the commission timeline? What have we decided to do? Who's on that committee? And I want to say I had to go to like five or six places, including like which commissioners are on and how do I find that commissioner and, and you know, and, and actually the chair and I talk about it pretty much, we use this website all the time and I still can be like, where is that document? So I actually wanted a document that that would encourage someone to say, you know, who, who is my commissioner on that? On that subcommittee or which commissioner do I know? Which, who do I feel like I can reach out to? And to have it all in one place. And honestly, you know, be able to click on your emails or Karina's email, you know, who do I want to reach out to and is it all right there? So that was part of what we wanted to do. Or what I, you know, was proposing to do. So this would go, it would be a link on that main page and then the link would be used as many places as we could think of. So we're always sending people back to the same central document. All right, um. And then I, I think when Karina and staff have time, I do want to do headers differently on that front page, but I don't think that it's urgent right now, but it's a little bit of, yeah, that just got, I, my view is just got stuck up there and it's like, I you know, you have the performance framework and you have the calendar and you have the link to the committee. It's like, why do, what are these and how are, how are they there? And I find that it's um, how do we want to do it? But it, that's not urgent. Um, and I don't know that it's extensive. It's really more reformatting of that page to make it a little bit clearer and what we're doing and why. Um. Okay, and then, um, Becca, I don't know if you want to see if attendees want to raise their hand or join in or whatever part of what we were doing is trying to see that we're getting, you know, people have input that aren't, um, I'd be interested in getting that. All right. The, um, next thing that we want, that I wanted to go over was the fir-
Is it just me or she?
Starting with, she froze.
Yeah, you have to start over, Julia. Oops. You have to start. Okay, I think you're unfrozen right now.
Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, just told me my.
But start over.
Stable.
Yep.
I'm in a beautiful old building that loves to kill internet. Um. Overall, the P E C asked, um, for us to roll out the whole forms project. So we are starting with the amendment documents. There's a lot of them, so we might do two groups. But what we also did in all of the contract renewals was have those schools agree to come back and look at the major documents that we're gonna work on that need to be ready by September. So the first group of amendment documents are gonna be now in the spring and the summer. But in the fall, we're going to approve a new form of contract, a performance framework and an intervention, um, ladder by the September meeting. Because at that point, the schools are agreeing that we are, that you guys are looking at tomorrow to enter into these new documents in the fall. I think that several of the attorneys are gonna go back to clients from last year and see if they will get on new ones. You have six new schools up for renewal. And then you have these massive, you know, you have, I think 11 after that and then 21. They could be on the same group of forms or 90% of the schools. That requires that these forms, that that group of contract performance framework and intervention ladder are approved by September. So we're doing amendments now, those big documents in the fall. And then we have a final one in December if there's any other documents that, um, we need to look at. The renewal application has already been approved by you for this year. So we're will approve that in the first group of forms. Um, and then there's a process if we wanted to look at that again later. Um, so turning to the first group of forms, which is the amendments, which is what we're talking about today. And we don't have documents to look at today because we wanted some direction from you. Um, let me go back to that. Um. So I'll share my screen again, but this is in the, um, working session folder. And there's a group of questions to get your input on, on the amendment forms. And I think that this is gonna be kind of an ongoing conversation throughout this form review process. What do you want in these documents? What makes sense for you? What makes sense as a cohesive group? And how do we balance between getting enough information that you want and not asking for information that no one ever uses? So uh, there's a lot of questions here, but I'm, I'm not actually trying to raise the questions in any way that, that drives you towards an answer. It's really kind of a, you know, what's going on. So I don't know if, um, or I would like to know at some point, um, for C S D staff, you know, to me, what's really important from them is what's how, which of these are really helpful to you? What, what just feels like busy work and, and what, um, what forms take a lot of time? Is there an easier, quicker way to do it? You know, I know that Karina's staff is working on it every single month for every single meeting. And I know that there's a lot of work that goes on in the background. So I don't know if Karina has any input on that now or will have input on that soon. Um, but I think that those are really key questions for C S D staff. So um, Karina, did you want to add here or do you want to add later? Do you have any overarching comments on the amendment forms or do you want to bring that up in the next meeting? It's up to you.
Um, I'll just add that this falls in line with, um, where the P E D is right now in terms of questioning. Um. If there is a way for us to reduce administrative burden for leaders, charter leaders and, um, in the case of P E D district superintendent, um, I think that over time uh, more and more has been required of school leaders. And so I think these questions of you know, what, what are we using the information for? Um, and is there a way to reduce the burden? Makes a lot of sense. I also um, think that it's time to update all of this, all of the forms and policies because they also still reference outdated um, systems, processes, et cetera, um, from the P E D. So, um, I just, I just wanted to say that. Thank you, Julia.
Great, um. And then we'll populate the documents so that they're available as soon as possible for C S D staff review before you look at them next, next month. But these are um, and, and a lot of these questions came, um, Rachel Stefosik, I think a lot of you all know her. Um, she is both on my contract and also does work for C S D when they need her. And she went through, through my contract and did kind of the first look at them. And these were questions that, that she had. Um. So when we're looking at the data on the amendments, I think it's relevant to see what do, what do we want? Why, why are they coming forward with an amendment? If it's an amendment, they are amending the contract, right? So they have a contract review and it says certain things when it first starts out. And then they have a requirement to come back in certain circumstances and update you, um, either notify you or amend the contract. And when we amend the contract, we're not going back and fixing the contract. It's a separate amendment form. Um, it's kept on a list by C S D, but we're not going back and having you all re-vote on the contract and having their boards re-vote on the contract. We are having them bring forward this amendment process. So you know, what's the purpose of it? Is it legally required? What do we have to do? What do you want to have there? Um. And this question between notification, I think there's two different questions on notification. Should just C S D be notified? Should you guys be notified? And should you take a vote on it? So tomorrow on your agenda, you have on the consent agenda a lot of these pieces of information that people are notifying you. And then you have at least two schools that are coming forward with an actual contract amendment that you're gonna vote on. Do we have that alignment right? Um. Policy versus a forum. Right now there's a policy and there's a forum. We're combining them. Uh, that is certainly our suggestion that we combine them into one document. There's also like five forms that could be combined into one. So that if you are talking about a new business manager, you check that box. If you're talking about a new head administrator, you check that box. You know, it doesn't have to be five separate forms. Um, and to combine the policy with the form. I, I will say that this it feels like the amendment process, um, embedded in a lot of these forms uh, kind of went a certain direction of like you had to have a, you had to meet certain criteria in order to be able to submit that form like um, school, adding school grades, you had to, there's all these things you had to prove that, that you were a certain grade and that you had a certain letter grade and that, um, you are compliant with everything else. Do you want there to be criteria that allow, you know, before you can come and apply to the P E C for a change? It's embedded in there now. I don't know if we're following it. Um, and is that what you want? Couple more major.
Julia, can I just weigh in a little bit here?
Yeah, and I can't, I can barely see any of you all when I, when I, um, share my screen, so.
My, my hand is up. Um, so can you go down a little bit? I'm sorry, up a little bit. Um, yeah, so the notification, um, I don't know, is this the time to have this discussion? Um, I, I just would like to say a few things about notification and then, um.
Yeah, and we're gonna go over a list of the forms in a minute, so you may want to add as well there, but sure.
Okay, so I think with that s- second bullet, right, um, about notification. I, I'm, I just want to caution that, you know, my staff does play a role in ensuring that any um, notification or form or amendment or whatever is complete. And what I wouldn't want for us to do is for P E C to get notification on something that isn't ready to move forward because it doesn't meet the criteria that the P E C has set for, um, asking for a notification. I also know that, um, when, when the set of documents were, were created, um, that there was a lot of thought put into, um, you know, notification versus, um, asking for approval um, of a change to the charter contract. And so just keeping that framework in mind, P E C members about like, what do you think is okay just to know about versus what does the P E C need to approve? And the way that if you're on that webpage, which is a link off of the P E C website, there's two columns. And one column is the notification. And the other is the amendment that, um, is not on the consent agenda. And it gets placed to the, uh, regular agenda because the P E C needs to make a decision about it. We don't make a decision when a new head administrator is hired. Uh, P E C does not make a decision when a new board member is brought on. We're simply notified. Um, and we do require the schools to provide documentation from their meetings and that sort of a thing. So I, I would caution P E C members to, um, think about those things moving forward.
Let me just get to the bottom of the questions and then we can start to look at, at them, um, so that we have direction as to how to go and revise these forms. Um. There's there's inconsistencies in the document right now about timeframes. And I think we should have a standard timeframe. However, many days they need to be complete to the P E C, to the C S D staff before it gets on the agenda. I think they should be consistent. Um, I think it should be the amount of time that P E C, that C S D needs in order to review those. And then you could establish just a time of year that amendments come in. I don't know if that's helpful or not. Um. I, a- and then finally renewing schools, when do you, if they have things that need to be amended, how do you want to address that? I would rather, and I know you've gone round and round, I'll just throw out what I think. I, I'd rather amendments for renewing schools be done like the spring before so that when you're renewing, you know what you're renewing. And you've had an opportunity to consider what's going on. Um, it, it is a time renewing schools kind of focus on this. Um. And, um. I, I don't particularly like you renewing it on old information and then them coming back immediately and asking to change something. But, you know, you could make a decision about that. But I think at a minimum, there should be a standard period of time, a standard date, certain days before the meeting where all the paperwork has to be in and it should be consistent and it's all over the board.
And Julia, if, if I may, um, it used to be the case that upon renewal, schools would also think about changes they would like to make to their charter and their, um, their charter contract. Um, and at some point that, that process changed to the one that you just described where schools were advised to wait and then request an amendment. So I, I tend to agree with you on that one.
Well, I, and, um, actually I know some commissioners have an opinion about this, but, um, I think what the problem was is that there would be a lot going on at renewal. And so you've got amendments and the renewal. I would even suggest cleaning up the amendments the spring before. Give them a deadline. If you want to change anything, now's when you need to do it. Have their boards come forward with new ideas, um, so that it's not all at the renewal. Um, I do think that there's a lot happening at renewal.
Yeah, and there are some that have months. That come before the P E C, but I, I do see Commissioner, uh, Commissioners Gibson and Robbins hands up.
Yeah, uh, with renewals, and that is true. It became very difficult to do amendments at the time of renewal because we got bogged down into the conversation of the amendment and it just got, um, muddied. I don't think the direction ever was to come after the renewal. The preference was to have that amendment done before. Um, but sometimes a school would wait until the renewal to mention the conversation. Um, and say, we wanted to do an amendment, but we were told not to do it now. And if they wait until October and say, hey, you know, here's the, here's the renewal application, we want to do an amendment. At that moment in time, they're gonna be told not to do it. Um, and hold off on it because we're not gonna hear it in December. But I absolutely agree that it would be the most ideal to do it in the spring. So that where, you know, we had an instance where a school brought an amendment at renewal. And they said that their application was contingent on that amendment being accepted. And we told them that if that amendment was their contingency, we're not gonna renew them. So they finally pulled the, the, um, amendment, uh, because. So they finally pulled the, the um, amendment, uh, because it wouldn't have been renewed. So it, you know, we don't, we didn't want to, we wanted to stop that ugly conversation and get mired in things that really didn't have as much to do with renewal.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes, thank you. A- and I think we need to be careful that yes, a lot of these amendments that people want to do at time of renewal are inappropriate. Uh, but I think if we have strict timeframes of when amendments can be submitted. Say a school mid midterm loses its lease for one reason or another. And they have to relocate. There's a process that has to go to, go through the relocation, but the contract would have to be amended for them to change locations. And I think we, i- if, if you put in strict uh, requirements that y- you cannot, you know, change your, your official address except at this time of the year. I think we have to be very careful of some of those restrictions in terms of time. I think um, there can be exceptions to almost anything. But I think for most of the amendments, as, as Commissioner Gibson mentioned, and, and Ms. Burns. I think we can lay out, but I, I think we need to be careful to not be so re- uh, you know, strict that no consideration will happen because, you know, like we know, things happen during the school year. Um, you know, uh, curriculum may need to change during the school year and uh, you know, the, the direction of the school may be shifting or something like that because of its student, student makeup. So I think, you know, we need to be careful that if the school wants to change its mission mid-year, that would probably be something that I would say, no, you can't do that mid-year. Uh, you know, that would be at the time of renewal or, or something like that. And it, and it becomes a whole new discussion, almost like a, a new application at that time. So we, we just, I just want to put caution as to, to not put strict timelines on everything that may be involved in the contract, but most things probably definitely could have those uh, strict dates of when it could be amended.
Maybe we can, when we're looking at the forums, we can identify if time is important. If the start date of an amendment, you know, because a new educational program or a change in an educational program or obviously, you know, um, and an enrollment cap, do you want that to be at the beginning of the school year? I, I don't know that, it just, we could. So there might be a couple of them that we just highlight. Is there a special generalized rule for renewing schools? Get them in, for example, by July one or something. Um, other ones, are there reasons for uh, there to be any timing? I guess I'm worried that the exception will swallow the rule, so I'm not sure putting a rule. It's yet another thing the schools are going to have to figure out, um, but we can look at that. We're looking to uh, simplify the forms. Make sure that, uh, so there's a lot fewer of them. And to combine the policy and the form into one. Um, let me show you this. Here are two examples of eligibility that are in these existing forms. Um, again, this is the focus of how this project was created before, which was trying to lend real certainty to uncertain situations, but really to, to push them. But here's an example. Of something that's in one of the forums. You know, do you want all performance data for the last three years? Do you want outstanding complaints and investigations in the amendment form? Then here's another one where you had to have a certain grade. Uh, this was the tier system, which isn't there anymore. You know, but these are kind of things that are in the existing forums. You know, you'll see them tomorrow, they're all over the forums. You know, do you? Do you want us to keep that in there? Do you want us to drop it down to the bottom? So the, I mean, we'll just drop it to the bottom so you can see what's being taken out, but you know, what's your thought on eligibility?
Commissioner Gibson?
So I, I'm just going to put in here that, you know, uh, the eligibility was actually requested by CSD when we did the amendment form. So, you know, agree, this needs to be looked at. I don't. I guess I want the input from CSD. Cause the only concern was, and I think the concern that was raised was we're dealing with a lot of schools that we would make a recommendation not to approve this amendment for increasing enrollment because they're not serving the kids well that are already there or adding a grade level. So that staff was spending a lot of time on amendment requests for schools that they ultimately wouldn't recommend the PEC approving the amendment. So the request came, can we lim- can we try to limit the number of requests that are coming in? And that's where this ultimately came from. I can easily get rid of the, this, but I think it's more CSD. I'd like to hear from them to whether they think it would become ultimately burdensome again. That a lot of schools would end up asking for these requests, that they wouldn't support the the expansion of the school, which is what most of these deal with, it, uh, the expansion in some form.
Commissioner Robbins?
Well, I think it also goes to the issue of being the commission being arbitrary and capricious. If we set conditions for amendments, specific amendments, not generally every amendment, but for specific amendments such as changing curriculum or adding uh, enrollment caps or adding grades. If there are specific uh, criteria in there that if they fall below that, then they're going to be denied. That they have to meet that, that gives us a floor. Because otherwise, I think what we've experienced in my almost five years on the commission. Schools go and they, they, they claim that the commission has been arbitrary and capricious because they don't have any standards that they have set. So I think, yes, in those areas where it's strictly something that um, is kind of a data gathering thing, but if it's going to go to the input of the recommendation of CSD or in, be important for the decision-making of the commission. I think putting certain conditions, minimum conditions for certain uh, changes, I think are appropriate.
Just in those three curriculum cap grades. I mean, we can see if any others come up that are.
Well, yeah, financial performance. I mean, we, you know, we've, we've, we've had, we've had some where, you know, to me, if someone has consistent significant or material deficiencies in their audit. That's a reason for me for con- not considering uh, approving a renewal. You know, if, if they consistently have these problems and they're not fixing them. You know, so you have financial, you have, you have uh, academic performance, you have governance issues. So all of these things could fall in, that if they're consistently not informing us of government, governance changes. And there can, we've had some schools where they've gone months and months where they didn't have the minimum five, five members to their governance council. Those are, those are operational issues. And I think it goes to the, the validity of our authorizing that charter. If they aren't going to be in compliance with the rules and with statute. So I think we, we just need to be cautious in those areas.
And just quickly. Would the amendments be curriculum, a cap or a grade extension? The type of amendment?
I think it's any type that comes to the PEC for approval. Not anything that's just notification. Any amendment that comes to the PEC for approval is, I think, what. And I, I fully agree with Commissioner Robbins. I think you, we should, I, I think that should be looked at for sure. I don't think they should stay these maybe, but I do believe there also should be some eligibility requirements. I don't know if these are the right ones. But I agree with si- si- setting a standard and I think that's, it, it actually makes sense. Um, if CSD was getting, you know, just everyone um, applying for these amendments and, but there's not really any reason to ever deny, like what, what's? There's no way to ever deny someone an amendment request if there's no set of standards um, about them either. Um, Director Chavez had her hand up and then Commissioner Korea.
Thank you. Um, so I agree with you Chair Burt. I do think that there should be some criteria before the amendments um, are made. I think that sometimes amendments radically change what the charter that was originally pro- proposed in the application is about. Um, when I think about grade level changes in particular. You know, the whole application is written for a particular set of students in mind. And um, so I do think having some criteria of that process. Um, I have been working on with my staff to take um, a harder look at over the past year. And so, you know, and I think that's something that we should be doing, um, is having clear criteria. I'm not sure what this example is about. I, I also think that you're showing here, Julia. I also think that, um, you know, and I was going to report this tomorrow, that yesterday was our, our final school site visit. And I would like some time to um, engage with my staff who now are not in schools, two and three and four days a week um, around this topic and, and do um, a look at how we are using the data and um, how we are, are working on the amendment process. I, I know that having accurate data is really important. So the notification about even how a mission statement is worded, um, I think is really crucial for us to have for you so that you know exactly what the mission statement is. And there's no question if they changed it, that we were informed. But I, I think that again, um, I appreciate Commissioner Gibson's comments that, you know, how is CSD using it? And um, I would like opportunity to work with my team to gather more information on that. So asking the specific questions during this discussion will help me to be able to do that. Thank you.
And I'm thinking Karina, that we might have a little cover sheet for each of these amendments that, you know, when we get to them. And then we, you know, we could have that, you, you know, you, you and your staff could put in, this is how we're using it. This is where we find it helpful. This, this is where we think, you know, so that we could look at each one um, under the same criteria. And you know, is it approval or notification? And I, I even think.
Yeah, or a spreadsheet actually where there's just a one-page matrix um, to answer the questions on all of them.
Yeah, and we have, I'll show you, and we're going to go to that in a minute. Um, that just goes to a bias in mine that I can't see it. I, I don't know, uh, or I don't mind seeing it in a spreadsheet, but I also want to see it when I'm thinking about that one document, but, or both. Um, we could pull it out. Um, the other thing along that line, just quickly is kind of compilation data. So what comes to my mind is if there have been three notifications of a board change and two head administrators and, um, you know, two financial managers who quit. That number of times that they've provided you a notification may really show you that there's a problem happening with the school. And if we don't look at it in that manner. I think if you're just seeing, oh, this month, there's this, um, this consent agenda and this one's on the consent agenda. That, that sometimes there's red flags embedded in the number of times you're coming forward. So there might even be something. But, but again, you know, this is another example where maybe we're making it more burdensome or we should be making it less. I don't know, but it's, I think it's a relevant conversation. All right, Commissioner Korea, I can't see, I can't see it now.
I was, uh, just very simply, I agree with you and with uh, Commissioner Robbins around having very specific standards. Uh, depending on what the amendment is, so that we don't end up in hot water. We laid out clearly, nobody can come back to us with our decisions. That's all.
Commissioner Gibson?
So along with that, I'm just wondering, um, and it's, it's more, I guess, for CSD staff. If, if there's any way instead of laying out criteria like we originally had, is there some way that we can use the information in the, in the annual reports to say, you know, if your annual report has shown X, Y, or Z, you can't, um, you, you know, you're not eligible for, and make it simpler for the schools, probably simpler for CSD because that information is already there, the school has it. So I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. And I absolutely agree on highlighting schools because I know it's, it's been. I know there have been a number of times when commissioners have questioned, hey, wasn't the school on for a change in the governance council last month as well? And how come there's been, so I think and somehow making it easier for the charter school division. But perhaps in the report, um, for the chart, when um, Karina does the charter school division report to say, you know, I just want to highlight or, um, it doesn't go on the consent agenda if there's been, um, you know, three changes within the last three months or whatever that it gets discussed. How come you've had these changes? The financial managers, that's a little bit trickier because sometimes it's a internal change within the organization that the business manager is part of and they're just shifting around staff. So I think we'd have to look at that, you know, were they fired? Did they quit out of frustration? It's like, I'm not going to work with them anymore. Or was it just a managerial decision on the part of the, the company itself that they? Cause I know we, we had, not that long ago, we had a lot of business manager changes and it had nothing to do with the schools, but the company itself just moved their personnel around. And that's why all those changes took place. So we'd have to look, you know, that would be an extra step for CSD to be, you know, to look at that so that we know why those changes took place.
Just one thing to add to that, one thing that Rachel was thinking is maybe it goes back to not having a strict yes or no, you're eligible or you're not. Cause she was saying, well, what if a school is really trying to address an issue by a curriculum change? And they've identified an issue that isn't working well and they're trying to make that improvement to have them not be able to make a change. And maybe they come and tell you why it's relevant to them and why. Yeah, so that it's not a strict black or white. Cause you, you know, you, you're, unless they are explaining it to you, they're not gonna, how are you gonna know, but?
So, and I, I guess my only question is, I see a difference in curriculum change and change in educational programming. And they have to do the amendment form because they're changing their ed programming. If they want to change their curriculum, they can do that every other day. And we don't get notified about that. But educational programming changes is a, because that's specifically outlined in the contract. What is your educational programming? So if they're making a big shift in that, I think we need to know it. Cause I think that could shift the mission of the school when they're changing their ed programming. So, you know, that's, um, maybe there was a little disconnect there with curriculum and ed programming.
I, I probably used the wrong word, I probably used the wrong word. I, I probably used the wrong word. I probably used the wrong word, but. Commissioner Robbins?
And this kind of goes to what I think Commissioner Gibson was saying and, and a little bit of what Julia Barnes was saying also. In terms of like a dashboard, if, if, if we could get a dashboard. And maybe this would be one of the good things for budget to look at. Funding a physician that would set up and maintain a charter school dashboard. That would show these significant things. How, how many times in the last three years did they have governance board changes? How many times did they have audit issues, repeat audit issues? Have that on, on a dashboard. Where it's not something that they have to go and research every time a, an amendment is coming to the commission, it's just populated. And all, all we have to do is, is look at that and it's, it's readily available. You know, years and years ago, I worked with over a hundred utilities throughout the world. And we had a dashboard on every single utility, the number of customers they had, the, the um. The types of power plants they had, if they were nuclear, coal, natural gas, whatever it was, we had all that information at our fingertips. So when we went and talked with these companies, we knew pretty much what their issues were and what they were dealing with. And that type of the dashboard, it, 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 it did take time and it did take a person or two to help maintain that. But I think we have sufficient funding that it would be very valuable and it may, at times of these amendment changes, free up staff. And expedite uh, the information coming to the commission so we can make uh better informed decisions. Just, just a thought for throw out, to have dashboards that we could just look at some of the, these uh critical issues. To see if there are recurring things.
Director Chavez, I saw you just put your hand down, but I know you were next and. Did you mean to like take yourself out of it or?
Thank you Chair Burt. I just wanted to mention that. We do keep track, right? We have spreadsheets. I love the idea of a dashboard. I don't know that we need a new staff person for that. We just need to just um decide how. What program we use or what that would be like. I think we could provide some access. I'm looking forward to going to the National Charter Schools Conference and I think tho- there will be lots of vendors showcasing. Showcasing um dashboards so we can get a sense for what that might cost. But we are keeping the data and I agree that it could be displayed um more readily available to the public. On, on each of the schools. But we do have that information, Commissioner Robbins. And um, we keep track of, of that, the changes in governing, board members. We keep track of any of the amendments that we get, uh whether they go on the consent agenda. Or on um, or if they're individual school um items for your agenda.
That is um really consistent with what I've heard Matt Paul raise, which is that schools should be able to go and look at something. And kind of get a general sense of where they are. Um, so it does go to that transparency. As well, and we're moving a little bit towards that now with. The con- with the school and the contract and the annual reports, that would be a, a great final step. Commissioner Voight?
Thank you. So um, I am all in favor of having something that is. Streamlined, efficient, functional, and not burdensome. Um, and not redundant. Um, so, and there's been some good comments in the chat too, I just wanted to point out. But I just wanna add, there are gonna be individual cases that is gonna take um individual considerations. You know, there's never gonna be that one size.
Alright. Alright, Ms. Barnes, is that, was that information helpful for you all to be able to start moving forward and? That last one is, yes, we're gonna eliminate school grading in the two thousand nineteen contract. So um, there are some things that. You know, just showed that we needed to look at these forms again. Um. I'm trying to decide. You just. Let me show you this briefly. I'm actually feeling like with the direction that you all are giving, that um. Chair and Director Chavez and I can, you know, we can get together and start to see how we wanna do this. This is just a list of. The various um documents. You know, there's, there's some, for example, that don't feel relevant, like there's a, a pre-K early childhood program. I don't know why that form is there. We might do a category of ones that don't seem to be relevant. And then also I think that there's ones that are. That are heightened, so like all of these grade level change. Actually, Rachel had a question about admission or lottery policies. You know, you clarified. What lottery policies can, what they can ask and what they can't, so. You know, do we need a form for that? Should, you know, so there are some. I don't know why there'd be a form to, for a school closure. I'm not sure what that is. So I think we could, I keep feeling like we can categorize stuff better. And bring back the categories for the overarching conversation. Maybe we'll take a. A look at that. And then maybe an overarching checklist so that when we do see it, you guys can say, you just have a series of questions that we're walking through. And then overall two. Things like the lease or things like the bylaws or things that are. Long complicated documents. There's really a tension between, do you want to look at them and have someone see if there are. Problems with them versus. I always get nervous as a lawyer that just does a cursory review of something. Cause later somebody can say, oh, well, you already looked at that and you had this opportunity. And I worry about timeframes that by which you have to do it and if we're replicating work of other agencies like P S F A, so. There's a lot of things that are attached or provided that I, I really just do have a question. Why do you want it and how do you use it? And the commission always has an ability to go back to a school to ask for something, so. If it was helpful once over the past five years for one school out of fifty-five. Let's not require fifty-five schools to provide that information, but anyway, I think it'll kind of be a more robust conversation. So I'm feeling like we should categorize them into different levels and bring them back to you in categories when we discuss them. And. Uh, I, well, I love the idea of a dashboard. I, I do worry that. School A comes and presents themselves one way and then school B comes and they're funnier or nicer or whatever. And you treated them differently because the meeting went differently. And that's. I think a dashboard provides that same look.
Can I say also, uh, in favor of the dashboard, it will prevent any rumor mills. Especially if it is uh, public. Uh, because schools talk amongst each other about who's doing what, you know, so I think that would be a great preventative.
That, that's gonna come up in conversation later today too on the M O U, so. And ties in with stuff that Karina's already been looking at. Uh, that's it for me right now. Next meeting, we're gonna have a lot of the forums and we'll try to present them in a way. And just to repeat, we have time to look at group one and if there's too many group one, we can do a group two. So I don't think it needs to be overwhelming, certainly to C S D. Nor the commissioners, but I do want to dig in a little bit and I wanna present it in a way that's a quick way to dig into it. That's it for me.
Alright.
Thanks.
So I do have a question for you all. I don't know exactly, I mean, the only, the only thing that's left on our agenda that. Could take us some time is probably looking at that red line of the M O U. Even with that, I'm not sure if it's gonna take us a really long time because it is stuff that we already discussed. And so it's really just confirming that what we discussed is what is in um paper. So that we can then kind of give that over to C S D and have them start looking at it um from the P E D point of view. So I'm open to you guys of, do you wanna take a five, ten-minute break right now and then try to push through and finish? Or would you like it to take a thirty-minute lunch break right now and come back and, and finish the agenda? So I'm open to either one of those.
I vote for a thirty-minute. That's just me though.
Okay, it looks like that's, I see that. Patty, are you on a thirty-minute as well? No, you were the power through. Okay.
I was powering, um, I'm always for powering through.
I know, I, I was, I was kind of leaning that way, but I was open to seeing what other people thought. So it seems like there's enough folks who are. Who really would like to take that thirty-minute break, so we'll go ahead and do that.
On all of them, but that's okay.
We'll do a thirty-minute break right now, so we'll be back at um twelve thirty-five.
Uh, is it nap time yet? It's this heat. Makes me tired.
Yeah, we've got, we're super smoky down here now.
Oh, really?
Yeah, the fire in the heela is. A layer over us and it's just, it's, it's growing every day, so. Yeah.
Alright, it is twelve thirty-five, so we'll go ahead and get started again. Um, we're on item number three, subcommittee reports. Um, the first one is virtual schools. Commissioner Gibson or Commissioner Davis, you wanna, you wanna?
Sure.
Great.
Sure. Um, real quick, I mean, I think we had a really robust discussion. When we met, I think it was last week. It's like all blurring in. Um, and we still have, I think, more questions that we need answered. Then we have um, a clear, we have a clear, kind of a clear direction on what we need to do. But we don't have all the information yet to make any concrete recommendations. So I appreciate all the work that Sam is doing from the Charter School Division. And I mean, we're just tasking her with, with a bunch of stuff to find us this information so that we can um. I think make the best recommendations. We're looking at, I think, two separate issues. We're looking at the current virtual schools and what policies and procedures may go into place for them. And also looking at the question, do we need any more virtual schools added to? The state authorized charter schools. So we still don't have answers for any of that yet, but Sam's doing a lot of work in investigating for us. So we can come forward with hopefully some good recommendations.
Uh, Commissioner Korea?
Here we go. So um, given the presentation this morning on S C L. Is part of what your group, uh, Patty is doing, is discussing, like if we wanna make the, if, for instance, if a P E C wanted to make. S C L programs. Uh, mandatory, if you will, over the coming years, is looking at virtual schools and how are they going to? Be effective with that, cause that's the one place I would think my, that they fail horribly. Maybe their kids have that outside of school anyway, but that would be a real challenge, I would think. So.
Absolutely, and I think also any kind of um accommodations. That, that need to be made, how successfully can they do it um virtually? But absolutely.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yeah, the, I think virtual schools are great for students who are. On, on track or at near, at or near grade level in terms of reading proficiency. The problem and the concern I have is where you have K through twelve or K through five. Schools that wanna be virtual, uh, totally virtual. How, how does, how does a kindergartner learn how to read? You know, if they, if they aren't sitting with someone who can work them through the phonics and things like that. You know, so, you know, and, and again, and even, even in upper grades, if someone is far behind in terms of their reading proficiency. It's going to impair virtual learning. You know, a thing that I've said and I think most educators, if you can read well, you'll, you'll be able to learn. If you cannot read well, you'll struggle learn. And that's one of the keys that. If students, you know, by third grade are, aren't at or near grade level. It's a concern for authorizing new charters, uh, virtual charters and for existing ones that. You know, how are they addressing the reading proficiency of students who are not. At or near proficiency, because that's one of my big concerns, cause that's not something you could easily do. Without an adult or someone, you know, much older assisting that person. And sometimes, you know, I think, you know, you, you get up to eighth, ninth grade and they, they aren't reading. Well, how, how can they do the work on a computer when they have to read and answer questions? And I think many of you know, we homeschool the last two years, my daughter, the last two years of high school. Obviously she could read, but I'm thinking, sitting there thinking, looking at the tests she had to take online. The questions that were asked, the math and science. If she was not at or near grade level in her reading, she was above grade level, but if she wasn't, how was she gonna be able to do that without someone sitting there? Reading them the questions. So, but that's one of the things that I think. So that, that's one of the things that I think, you know, it nee- needs to also be addressed. And maybe it's a legislative answer, it's not necessarily something that, that PED or, uh, PEC can, can set. But that may, it may require legislation to say that if you're not at least nearing proficiency and greeting, then uh, your student, then that they can't participate or that the school, you know, prior to you know, fourth grade or fifth grade, you can't have a virtual school, totally virtual. Uh, until that, you know, you, you can, uh, provide some sort of reading assistance to get them uh, at or near proficiency.
And, um, I mean. We've looked at that, um, you know, the challenge is, as you know. You can't, we already have within our portfolio, a school that has K, um, in it, so we can't stop that. Uh, it would require legislation, uh, moving forward to say, we, I think. I think we'd even have to look at, do we have the ability to say there will be no more virtual schools. We've got enough open seats in the two that we have. And, um, one of the things we are looking at is through the two years of the pandemic, there's been, uh, uh, an uptick of districts that are offering virtual schools. So there's more possibilities for parents to send their school, send their child to a virtual school without having to be the two larger ones. Um, so that is something that we're looking at, but I think some of it would have to come legislatively. I wholeheartedly agree with you on that, um, lower grades. And one of the things we are looking at is that contract that parents, well. Whoever it is, has to sign with that virtual school, whatever they're calling them, you know, the school coach or whatever with that promise, what it looks like and how well they enforce that so that at least with those lower grades. There is that support that's coming from home. You know, you all know, I didn't go to kindergarten, so I didn't learn those important lessons and this is what happens. So it's it's really important and I, and I get it. Those were always those difficult conversations when I'd have a parent call and say, I want a virtual school for my kindergartner. And it's like, really? Do you know what kindergarten is supposed to be there for? And it's, you know, and we saw the devastation of those kids that went to first grade this year that didn't have the opportunity to go in-person kindergarten. So, um. We are looking at that and hopefully we'll have some, uh, good recommendations for you. Sam says, Sam has a lot of work ahead of her for our next meeting to give us the information that, uh, we've asked her for, because every time we talk we get, we have more questions. Let, not answers, but we've got more questions. But thanks for that input.
The next one is performance framework project team, so Commissioner Boyd.
Okay, thanks. Um, so most recently, over the course of our last two meetings, we really dug into, um. Indicators two D through two H. Um, defining and, uh, tightening up the components of those indicators. Um, and, uh, in case you don't know what those are, I just happened to have the document in front of me. Two D is cultural and linguistic responsiveness. Two E is, uh, student-staff relationships and school climate, um. Which includes social emotional learning, equitable behavior interventions. Uh, and. Oh, that's a long one. And then. Wow. Two F is family engagement. So we kind of, um, parsed through these and, and, um. Agreed upon where we could combine, uh, different, uh, components. Uh, lots of commentary and we're not ready for a, another updated draft yet to be posted on, uh, the PEC website for input. Uh, hopefully we'll have that. I think our goal was for our, after our working session to bring it in front of the full PEC, uh, for approval and then it would go as an updated draft. Um, for public input on the website. Um. Is there anything any of the other project team members would like to add?
Okay. Thanks. All right. So hearing none, the next one is, um, foundation. I don't know who would like to give the update for that group.
I mean, to do that, Julia, I've got it up here.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Okay, um, so we had a really great, uh, discussion with, um. Patty Matthews, Connie Dove and, um, Matt Paul about, uh. About the, uh, purpose of foundations, charter school foundations, how the PEC can support the work and the partnerships, uh, that schools have with foundations. Um, some of the questions we had answered were answered, were what are the benefits of a foundation for the charter school? Mostly stems around, uh, holding their lease, um. Ongoing issues surrounding charter school facilities, that's a constant, finding a building, finding affordable, um. Affordable facilities, uh. Let's see. Legal considerations for foundations, um, the big one was the rights of employees and staff, school staff to associate with foundations. Um, and or be official members of that foundation board. Uh, and being possibly paid by the foundation, that was a topic of discussion, um. And also should a foundation be looked at differently, uh, depending on the way the foundation is operated? Basically, you know, the, the commission really has no jurisdiction over, uh, compliance of a foundation. And, uh, any financial issues would be through their audits, um. What else? I'm kind of jumping around through this document, um. It was enlightening, it was, it was a good discussion. Uh, Connie Dove has probably started about 40 foundations and with different charter schools. Um, what else, Julia? Anything else you want to add?
Uh, there were a couple of really major takeaways and I think that Melissa's going to help us look at this, um, as well, which is where is information already provided on foundations in other forums? Um, where is it, where isn't it? And really looking more at the you know, they're set up under a certain provision of the tax code, so really understanding if there's limitations under the tax code already. And then I think that, um, you know, we've known for a while that we want to wait for the special audit. Uh, to come back to see if there's more that we want to do. Um. I just found it very helpful, was really glad they were there. I thought it was a really interesting conversation. Um.
Do you feel that we're kind of at a pause though, um?
I feel like we're at a pause to know where the state auditor wants to come out. We may do some more work in preparing kind of what, what we were told and then where. You know, where is there information, where do people think there is information and what, when you go to look at that information, what's there? So. Um, I, I think we're, I agree with you. I think that we can have a pause right now. I don't know that the special audit will take too long. And that'll give us a lot more information. The other thing they really wanted was for us to look at foundations from the school side and what the schools can do to confirm what's happening at the foundation. A lot of the hesitancy comes with them thinking that the PEC would want to take some action regarding foundations themselves. I also think that'll be interesting from the special audit.
Hmm, yeah. That's it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Um, number D or number D, letter D is, uh, budget and we didn't meet this last month, but I have talked to Karina, they're still crunching some numbers to get updated numbers. And then, um, and Patty, you should be looking out for an email from Karina soon to, we'll be scheduling one maybe as early as early next week. So, um, be on the lookout because we'll be having a budget subcommittee meeting very soon. All right, that takes us to number four, Mayberry Hall update, and I will hand that over to Director Chavez.
Um, so commissioners, you should be able to see in your, uh. Um, set of materials for the work session, um, some photos that were taken, uh. To show the electrical work that was conducted in Mayberry Hall. Um, and I'm calling Woody. Who, um, wanted to give you an update on the rest of the work, hold on. So I have Woody on speakerphone, um, and he, he's in a car, um, so that's why he's not joined um, the Zoom, but, um, Woody, I know that you have met recently with, um, AT Connect. Um, IT Connect, sorry, and, um, are keeping sort of doing the project management on the upgrades to Mayberry Hall. Did you meet with Chad yesterday, I think? Woody? Hmm, maybe he's.
Las Vegas, uh, uh, district. So I apologize if I'm breaking up and kind of in and out, so, um. So yeah, so I met with Chad, uh, Heinz, who is the, the, uh, point of contact for IT. Uh, Connect, he is the, uh, the project lead, uh, for us on that. Uh, to get an update, to give you guys an update on that, uh, he is, uh, in the process of putting together a, uh, schedule of kind of uh, installs, uh, for us. So I'm hoping to have that beginning either at the end of this week, getting updates. Uh, the stuff is still on order, we're still waiting for stuff to come in. Uh, as we start getting stuff in, they will start installing right away. Uh, so that is with where we're at with IT Connect. I'm also at the process of, uh, meeting up with, uh, AGM Construction. Uh, they are the ones that installed the, the outlets in around the, uh, the horseshoe. Uh, which I believe I, I sent you guys the, the pictures of what the outlets look like.
Yes, they got that, Woody.
Where the mics plug into, every one of those have a, uh, a USB slash, uh, outlet uh, for electrical, uh, on there, uh, which, uh, so there's, I think, uh, there's a total of 17 XLR ports, so there's 17 outlets around the horseshoe. And then also, we replaced the floor outlets on the bottom, on the floor, uh, because they were damaged and busted. And so, uh, it was a hazard, so we replaced those as well. And those are the new, uh, copper plates that you guys saw, metal plates that are new seat as well in that picture. Uh, but I did meet with, uh, AGM, uh, Construction, uh, to find out because we needed to get a quote for two outlets for the back wall because, uh, uh, the original quote, when I did the for the electrical for the horseshoe, the putting TVs on the back wall were not part of that. And so I'm getting another quote, uh, for the back wall, uh, for outlets there. Uh, I don't believe it'll be too much or too expensive because there is electricity already in the wall or in the, the ceiling and all they do is bring it down and drop it in. Uh, but, uh, the the lead for AGM, it lives in, uh, Las Vegas, Pecos area, so he has been unavailable to, uh. Get me a quote, uh, for the electrical, so they're reaching out to Allied Electrical, who is the, the subcontractor who installed the, uh, the electrical for, uh, the horseshoe. Uh, they're going to be coming by, uh, either tomorrow or early next week to give me a quote. I want to do, uh, for how much it's going to cost to bring down those, uh, two outlets for those back TVs.
Thank you, Woody. Um, do you want to stand for questions right now? And I can, I can let you know who's got their hand up and facilitate that. So commissioners, if you have any questions. Yeah, Becca?
My, my only question is just going to be the same thing every time is, do, do they think that this is going to be done by June 30th?
The plan is that it will be done by. Yeah, uh, it is, uh, it's like a. But that is always a issue we're going to come across with, uh, with this, uh, with this project. Because of, uh, the way everything is distributed in that, uh, we're always going to have possible issues with that, more so.
I have no idea what anything you said, but I'm okay with, yes, that's the plan right now. I'm good, like, that's I'm fine. Like, knowing that there's, there's other things that could happen, fine, but as long as, yes, that's the plan still and they feel good about, then I'm good to go.
Yeah, no, we're, the plan is everything be, uh, installed and, uh, in place before June 30th, that is the plan. Uh, so we, we still have some time, uh, for that deadline to, to reach, so. But the plan is, is yes, everything will be installed and, uh, and, uh, ordered in and installed by June 30th. That is the plan.
And Commissioner Robbins has his hand up?
Thank you. Do we have the total, uh, amount of what the bid was with these, uh, additional monitors in the back?
Uh, so the, the additional, uh, quote is everything in the, that's been there is, uh, I think it was close to 250,000 altogether. I'm not sure what the individual screens are, since I don't have that information in front of me. I can't give you, uh, what that would be, but I believe, uh, Karina does have the quote on what those, uh, uh, those large, uh, screens were.
So, and David, those were already, those were already a part of the quote. The only thing that's additional to what was our, what we have already seen and gone through is they're adding two out, like two outlets were erroneously left out. That's the only, it's the outlets to the monitors that we already went through.
But the, but the IT can.
Yeah, so there was no, there's no additional cost or I think from, uh, that quote for the IT connect. Uh, it is the, the outlets that we have to run for those TVs because the original, uh, when we did the scope of work originally way back when. We, uh, uh, there was no monitors to be in place, they were all just going to be in front of the, uh, with you guys in the, on the horseshoe. And then when we did the, uh, the new scope of work with IT Connect, you guys wanted to add that you liked the idea of having the monitors, uh, the TVs in the back for the audience to that, uh. I, that was, that part is actually my fault because I didn't put that they're going to be powered for TVs. So, uh, so that's, that's where that, uh, extra cost of, has to come into play for that electrical. But it's no additional cost for the TVs, it's just the outlets for the power for those TVs.
So Woody, did you say that the contract, the total contract with IT Connect is 250,000?
It's something like that, yes, sir.
It's in our records, let me bring up that folder.
It, it's actually probably, it's, I know it's less than that, but I just brought it up. For the IT contract.
And while I'm getting that information, um, any other questions from commissioners? I don't see anybody's hand up. And it's taking me a little while. I can't remember the month that we presented it, but I'm going back through our meeting minutes and documents, because it's in there.
Okay, yeah, if, if you guys need me to send it, I would be more than happy to resend it to you guys as well. So it's not a problem.
Yeah, it's definitely in our, in the record. It's just a matter of which month. I don't know if somebody remembers if that was, what month that was.
We don't need to hold it right now. That's fine. We, I can wait and get the information later.
Yeah, January or February. Okay, and Commissioner Robbins, I think, is saying we don't need to hold you on the phone. Just one last check, commissioners, any other questions for Woody? If not, we'll say goodbye. Thanks, Woody.
You're welcome. And Madam Chair, commissioners, thank you so much. If you guys have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me.
All right.
Thank you, guys. Bye bye.
Bye. All right, I'll, I'll look for those, Commissioner Robbins, and let you know.
I found if you go to the CSD folder and then financial information, it's in there from February 9th.
Thank you.
Um, all right. I mean, honestly, that's good news. It's not bad news yet. Not till next month, that's bad news, I think, if there's going to be any. So we'll just stay hopeful. Um, all right, so that brings us to, okay, PED, PEC, MOU. So I'm just going to start, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Barnes, but I'm just going to kind of outline the process again, just to make sure everyone's clear. First, the last couple of months, we've just been taking input as to things that commissioners would like to see proposed differently in the MOU. So the last couple of working sessions, it's just been collecting information from commissioners. Um, I then instructed Julia to go ahead and take those comments and actually implement that, like, put them into a red line draft of the current MOU. So today, we're going to take a look at that red line draft. Um, and ensure that that is what, what we've said, and what we've talked about, is what is then translated into this. If there's anything that needs to be changed right now, the next step would be that we are going to take this as a draft. Um, and have Director Chavez go ahead and start taking a look at it deeper. Have PED team take a look at it, and then start the negotiations, if you will, of, you know, what they, what they think, and then come together on it. So today, we're just going to take a look at the red line. Um, knowing that this is just commissioner input only, this is not, we have not yet had any conversation or consideration of PED or, or CSD in this draft as of yet. So, um, that being said, Ms. Barnes, if you can, I don't know how exactly, if you want to just share your screen and then go through it?
Yeah, I want to share my screen, and I, I apologize. We coordinated to make sure the right draft got uploaded, and I uploaded the wrong draft, so it's this MOU red line two. It's now correct in the working session folder. I'll get Karina's team to fix it this afternoon. If anyone that is just an attendee wants me to send this document to you, you could let
Oh, you just went on mute, Julia.
Um, so if someone who can't see the folder, but I'll share it now, wants an email of this, I can do it. Um, I will add, just to go back, the information on Mayberry Hall to one of the projects that we're doing, so that it collects the data where it's easy to find. That's a good example, where it's hard to remember when we talked about something. So this document at the top, again, just indicates what the project is, what the purpose is, and where we are right now. It's one of the projects on that overarching sheet that would go out to the public, so the public could see, or anyone can see what we're doing. Um, I've just taken the existing MOU. I have not made any changes to the top sections. Um, the first proposed change actually comes out of some of the conversations from the executive committee in terms of how do we get information and data, which is really consistent with what we were talking about this morning, to have, I've just called it a commission researcher, but someone that could support it could be a PEC liaison. Um, that would follow up on some of these projects that we've been talking about, and some of the data that we want to get. Often, I find, exactly as Commissioner Robbins was saying earlier, I want stuff to be compared so that we can see it from different viewpoints, to make sure that something's not arbitrary. I think that there's a lot of, I'll just give you an example, like SAM schools. What, what, who are the SAM schools? What does it look like overarching? Where do they stand with each other? Just, you know, someone that collects that kind of information. That could help do a data, you know, a dashboard, for example. Um, all the way through here, I have tried, you can see in this first paragraph, am I sharing my screen? No, I am not. So, right here in this paragraph, this talks about who's going to be on a hiring committee. This one happens to be for the division director, who, what the commission's role is versus the department's role, and who has the final hiring decision. So I've echoed that several times through here. Just propose that it's the director, because the director's the one who makes all hiring decisions, but I've proposed two commissioners on the hiring committee. Um, and then a final decision by the director after consultation with the hiring committee, very similar to the language here. Um, I'll go through them, and, uh, you know, obviously, I haven't gotten your input on the language. The next one is on the budget, which is a key section. This up to 2% was discussed at the last meeting in terms of setting a budget by August 15th, was what it was in my notes. And to develop a budget that, you know, will include the following. I have taken out that calculation. My understanding is that calculation resulted in 28% of an administrative cost by the department, so I've taken out that whole calculation and added it down here.
I hate to interrupt you, but I did see Commissioner Voight's hand go up. But I'm also wondering, I don't know, I'm wondering if you either want to do it to where you go over all of this, and then we go back to the top and go one by one, or do that top, the first one, and then let's discuss it. Um, because I'll either call on Commissioner Voight or not right now.
Let me get all the way through, so that you can see the thinking that, what I've done.
And I just tried, I wanted to comment when you're done. Okay, great. All right. So y'all can put your hands up, but I won't, just so you know, I won't be calling on you until after the whole thing's over. So, okay, great. All right.
If it can take too long to be over. I've tried to put the, the staffing and expenses for the commission at the top, kind of reorganized it. Actually, I have a question. I don't know what support for state charter schools means. How that would be in the budget. You're taking money from their budget and then turning back around and spending it on them, but I don't know. I just had a question. I left it in, though. Um, then here, somehow I'm doing something that's stopping the red line. Wait a second, maybe I just need to click here. Um, the next one is this idea that if it's less in a year, you withhold less, but I've tried to make sure that that didn't cause you to not be able to use the full 2% at another time. And semi-annually, you get these reports back, including the 28, what's, how the 28% is generally spent. I've tried not to make it be too onerous, so that they don't have to do it by the minute, but so that you get a general idea. The state chartered schools, some of the ideas potentially being discussed from the performance framework working group, I'm not quite sure if you still are, but was getting information from other divisions at PED. And frankly, we're giving them 28% of your budget. So this is just being more explicit that you get timely reports, because part of my concern in making a change to a performance framework is that you would have control over the people that are providing that information, and this might give some ability and some belief that we're going to get information in a timely way, that they're not, sorry, this is kind of a lot, but they're not doing you a favor by doing this. You are, they have a budget for it. Then down here for legal counsel, again, I just have copied the same type of information above, which is that, but this is a switch that, that you all hire legal counsel that keeps the same commit, committee, and that you will consult the hiring committee. There's an ability to discuss the request for proposals in closed session. If it's an employee, or if it's a contractor, presently I'm a contractor, but they could decide to do it as an employee. Either way, the PEC could have a closed session conversation, but your final vote has to be made in open meeting. But again, I've just tried to replicate the same concept here, but make it clear that the PEC chooses its counsel. And then at the bottom, I've just cut out a lot of that formulaic stuff and just dropped it in the bottom. I'm finished now.
All right, thanks, Julia. All right, so we'll start with Lana, or Commissioner Voight.
That's okay, Becca. Um, so thanks a lot for doing this, Julia. I like, I like all the contextual pieces. I just wanted to point out, and these are mostly, I don't know, just organizational thoughts. So, and I was looking at the old draft that was uploaded.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm mad at myself.
That's okay. It's probably the same. Um, so like, it was in paragraph two of the old draft, there was, it said something about the charter school researcher, and I love the idea of having a researcher and liaison. I've felt that has been needed since eternity. So, but I think that that person could do the semi-annual accounting. Now, that was in paragraph two.
It just got moved up. It's right here.
Okay.
Because I moved it up to staffing.
Okay, so it seems like that person would be a good person to do that semi-annual accounting and take the burden off the CSD. Um, and then in paragraph five of the old draft, was it talking about the commission's council comes from the charter schools 2%, or was it the CSD's council? I, I didn't
So, hold on a second, semi-annual budget review. This paragraph on council is your council is, is presently my contract.
Okay, so it's
The 28% pays in part for PED council, who, as you know, does, does work on issues, but that would be part of the 28%, someone like Aaron's work. And then this contract here is my contract, comes out of your 72% and is right here under section B.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. And then I also agree about that, under budget, the number G. I was unclear about what support was. That seemed pretty ambiguous. I think that could even just go bye-bye. Letter G could just be deleted. Um, I think that, um, if the MOU goes through that, we put the instructions for a hiring committee into our bylaws also. Um, or it could just go into the bylaws and not the MOU. I don't know, but it should be, I think it should, it could also be a good fit into the bylaws.
Yeah, I'd put it both places, because the bylaws don't, are not on the PED side.
Right. Okay, super. And then yeah. Also, um, I really love the fact that we named how the other bureaus within PED forward their reports to the charter school division, so the charter school division doesn't have to go scrambling or wait. Um, and that should be methodical. So I really, I really like that. And I also appreciate the language of up to 2%. Um, so I like it, I like it, I like it. Thanks.
Commissioner Robbins?
Thank you. Julia, did you check with anyone at PED that an August 15th timeframe? Because again, statute requires PED, and I think it should be spelled out in this memo, that they take our budget as presented and included. They don't get veto power over PED budgeting. Or over PEC budgeting. I, I think that we need to put the statute language in that says it shall be, and this MOU, that way they're agreeing to that. I believe the August 15th date may be too late for PED to have it in there. I think the other thing is, is that PEC must review and approve it before it's presented to the PED. So I think we have an obligation as a PEC to approve that budget and then submit it to the PED. So that may require it to be prepared absent minor technical adjustments or anything like that. You know, in a meeting, you know, the late July meeting, or when we have a meeting the first week of August, because my experience in working with budgets and things, if you wait until the 15th, PED, it's difficult for them to then incorporate all of this at that late date, if they are not in, involved in the process earlier on, and the numbers aren't given to them a little earlier. So that's just one caveat, is that date may need to move forward somewhat, and that
Just put the date that, that I have written some of the comments.
Right. And that's fine. But also, I think we need to make sure that there's PEC commission approval of that budget that's presented. And I'll say this again, I think the 28% is way too high. I had a discussion when we had the Chamber of Commerce luncheon in Albuquerque. I had a brief discussion before that luncheon with Secretary Steinhaus. He agrees that administrative support should not include covering internal costs that do not support the PEC. So I think the 28% is too high. Personally, I would like it to be no greater than 15% of the 2%. So let's just, I'll just use round numbers, $3 million. 15% of that would be 450,000. Or, or 20% of what is the direct expended budgeted amounts for the PEC and CSD. I think that those are reasonable limits, reasonable limits, and he said, yes, other functions within PED should be funded by the legislature, and if they cannot be persuaded to fund those functions, they shouldn't be using state charter funds to then supplement the lack of funding that the legislature is giving them to support activities that do not directly support. But, you know, if, if we just set a smaller amount, and it could be the larger of 15% of the, of the 2% or 20% of what's budgeted. So if there was, you know, $2 million budgeted between CSD and PEC, which I think that would be high, that 20% is still $400,000, but if it's $3 million overall, they get the higher, they get the 450,000. But then they don't have to have as detailed of an accounting on how they're spending those internal funds. We just kind of said, said it. Because like I mentioned before, with federal funding and things, you go above 20%, and they will scrutinize you, and the Office of Inspector General for the, the federal agency will scrutinize every dollar that you're spending from those federal Will scrutinize every dollar that you're spending from those federal grants. So I think, you know. And, and Secretary Steinhaus was very open to limiting that. And I appreciated his input. So the conversations with him probably have to have. The, the, the only other concern I have is where the hiring of the council, that there's. Three PED and there's three PEC. You know, I would like it to be three PEC and two PED. And it could be the two PED that are designated by the secretary. If he wants a finance person on there, that's fine. If he wants it to be the director, that's fine. I think the director would be obviously a good choice. But I think it should be at the discretion of the secretary to designate the two designees from PED. But I don't know that they should have equal voice because that isn't really our council or is it a share? Again, that's my opinion. But I think those three things, the other changes that are recommended, Julia, I really like those. I think it does clean a lot of things up. And takes away some of the issues that I previously had. But I would like a, a tighter cap on what can be done. Because especially since we're seeing more and more charter schools. And I think we need to push that charter school division. Get fully funded. And, 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 you know, the, the last thing, there is one other thing. I think the semi annual accounting is too infrequent. It should be quarterly. You know, when, you know, the, the secretaries I dealt with cabinet secretaries, they wanted monthly reporting on what their financial position and their budget position is. Most organizations have monthly reviews of what spending is. I don't think quarterly is going to be a burdensome for PED to do. Because once you set up the, the polls out of share. It literally would take them 15 minutes to pull that information and dump it into a, a pre-formatted report. It's not a time consuming thing. They literally, once they do it, they, they could give you a monthly, but I think quarterly should be the minimum. Thank you.
Commissioner Gibson.
So thanks. So Commissioner Robbins stole a lot of my thunder. Because one of the things I was going to say was. With the selection of the council, I don't think it should ever be an even number anyway on the committee. Because you can have problems with six. But I absolutely agree that the PEC should be the majority vote on who is their counsel. But I just need a little clarification about that closed session with the selection. Because I want to make sure that during that closed session commissioners have the ability to. Have the application for the position. Because that was one of the struggles we had the last time that it was embargoed until. After the decision was made so that their commissioners were going just on our recommendation. We got to read it, trust us. And I don't think that's appropriate. I think commissioners should have all of the information. I have no problem with it being in closed session to keep that information private. But we were told the last time couldn't even be done that way. And then obviously, yeah, the public vote and discussion. But I want to make sure that commissioners have access to all of the appropriate information to make that decision in the open meeting. So the.
The, the language of six. Is that portion of a meeting at which a decision concerning purchases in an amount exceeding $2,500. That can be made only from one source and that portion of meetings at which the contents. Of competitive sealed proposals solicited are discussed during the contract negotiation process. So you're quite, I, I actually. Had this thought in my mind that we needed to really understand with the procurement team. What they needed this language to look like. So. I, I'm more put in from the Open Meetings Act side. And actually, that's one of the things that was not correct in the first draft. So I needed, you know, I want it, and I went back to. Put in the citations. So I think your point is really well taken. And obviously someone came forward last time and some limitations for you guys. And I'd like to understand those and test them under the procurement code. So I think that needs to happen. But my, my initial thought is that the Open Meetings Act allows you to discuss procurement in a closed session. And also you could have the. Hiring team, this, this group of five people or six people. You know, they can, they could come in in a limited way into that conversation. But we need to make sure that both the Open Meetings Act and the procurement code are taken care of. So.
Right.
Is it exactly right yet? Maybe not. I, you may, may need to add more.
Yeah, I think so. So, so thanks for that. And I also agree with Commissioner Robbins on the, that 28%. I have OJDA always said it the last time, with charter schools being asked to pay money. For the services of PED when traditional school districts don't have to pay for those services. So that it's, there's, but it's a less bitter pill when you added that little clause in there. That because we're paying for it, the PED divisions. It's still a bitter pill because I still think it's unfair to the charter schools that they have to pay. For PED servicing when a traditional school does not. So I would be more in favor of. Lowering that percentage and yes, saying to the legislature, you need to fully fund for this. That, you know, this is what's required and having PED put that in the budget. And say, we need more money because we want to provide the best services. So, and then my only other angst is with that vocational clause. Only because, you know, we, we put that in there. In hopes of fixing it legislatively because there was a concern that was raised whether we can in an MOU. And I don't think we can, um, you know, it's in the constitution, we're given that power. So can we just abrogate that power? And I still have concern over that. And I know we did it the last time to try to, you know. Start on a good foot and get things. In a better place with PED, understanding that we have no funding for vocational. So even though we've got the, technically the authority for it, we have no capacity to oversee it because we don't have any staffing for it. But I just don't know whether, you know, I think we have to do something to fix it in a, in the bigger picture. So that's my only, I like, you know, I like everything else. I just have, you know, a little angst about that.
I agree with you on that one.
I think, I, I feel like the commission researcher, I wonder if we could just change the name to be, or I wonder if. I would like to make that position a little bit more flexible. So I don't know if it's just the director, she'll hire a. I mean, it could be commission liaison to where, to make it just like in general. And then I think it should just be like to provide necessary, like I feel like it's, it's too specific in here. I actually would like it to just be a little bit. Like to provide, to, to, to provide direct support to the PEC instead of all of that. And then allow the director to be able to write into the parf, the, the various things. Cause I do believe that could kind of meld over time. And so. I, I guess I feel like it's, it's a much too specific for this MOU.
That's what I want is, I want the. When the PEC's made a decision to do something. That requires, you know, more in depth, we can either do it at a deeper level or whatever we, you know. I, I, I want the chair to be able to do that, that. And you know, that's the way my contract is written. I don't know if that's always the way my contract has been written. But my view of that is that that works well. That I get clear and have that clear direction on what the chair wants following the, what the PEC has asked.
I hear you. I think my, what's going to be. What could potentially be really difficult about that, Julia, and I'm going to come from it as a former state director. Is state employees' job descriptions are very specific. And especially at the, probably the level that this employee would be, they would probably be under the union. And you can't have really vague, like it does have to be specific in their job description.
Then, then I'd want the MOU to, I, I would want. I guess that's in part why I'm thinking that something like this should go in there because that should be in the job description.
I guess I just think like it could be at collab, like just, we'll provide direct support to the commission as. Like in collaboration with the PEC and the director and then not make it so specific. Cause once again, this MOU, it would be, for me, it's a fallacy to make it to where we have to update this often. And, and so I just would prefer it to be not so specific. Because if Karina does hire someone who's a researcher, but they're not the PEC researcher. Then it does, and those duties should shift over there. And then there should be something different that this person. I just feel like we need more flexibility in this position. I do believe there should be like a commission person. I think that that's what I would like to see more than anything is like a commission designated person. That their full time job is to like, take care of the commission. Um, but I'm open to what the, based off of the needs of the commission. And that, that be flexible throughout the years of this MOU. If, yeah, if other, if you guys, I see all of you with your hands up. If you want to talk about this particular thing, because I do have other things. So if you want to talk about this exact thing, I will call on you. And otherwise I'm gonna keep talking. Okay, Glenna, then.
You know, I agree. I think. There needs to be flexibility built into the job description, I think. Because I think bridging also is really important. I don't know if you want to use that word bridge or, but collaborate. But, um, because I think the chair, the director should definitely be able to tap this liaison person. For bridging work between. So I don't know if you want to build that language, bridging work between the PEC and the CSD. That type of lingo. Because, and I think that's very specific but broad. So that's it.
Yeah. My, my, my thought was perhaps the term direct support to the commission as directed by the chair. Maybe we could, you know, phrase it to provide additional support as directed by the chair or commission. Because if the commission takes a vote, you know, a six, a six, four vote to do something. You know, that, that, that can also do the thing. So add, add that in to, to provide additional support. To, because the, the word direct. Implies their employee, they're an employee of the commission and we don't have statutory authority. So if it's to provide additional support. As requested, and, and maybe that's better term, as requested by the chair or commission. I'm just thinking of, again, wordsmithing this a little bit to get past any sort of statutory things that this is our employee. But I think we have to be careful because technically CSD is our administrative support. I mean, in general, if we have a need, CSD is required to provide that. But if we have this person to act, like you said, Chair, as a liaison, a, a, a more intimate. Relationship to do commission directed research and support. Or commission requested support, you know, and, and analysis. That might be a better term rather than that we're directing it or that we're controlling it in that sense that, that we request that. I'm just trying to keep us out of some sort of legal quagmire that they say, you know, you can't do this.
I'm thinking maybe supporting, going back to language that is in the duties of the commission. Maybe we could just say supporting the duties of the commission and cite the, cite the law because you have that. Cause some of it you don't do right now, like a lot of national best practices. You don't have an opportunity to go have somebody to say, here's what's happening on this topic, you know.
So are you suggesting that that would replace all of the next part of it? Okay. So all that would go and then it would just be supporting the duties of the commission.
Pursue it to, pursuant to the statute.
I do feel like that leaves it open to where that could be, I mean, that's. That's extremely broad, honestly, like in, in all honesty, it's extremely broad. So. I feel comfortable with that. I feel like it, it gives us a dedicated person, which to me is, was the most important part. Like that's overall, like is having this dedicated person to where we're not pooling Karina in 17 different ways. And then Bridgette in 17 other ways, you know, just having someone who they're there dealing with all of our issues. And that's what the main thing for me is so, and then making sure we allow flexibility for the future years of the MOU.
That's exactly what this person would do. So I feel like that's a very. Very appropriate because that's exactly what.
Yeah. And, and, and I still think once again, we'll, we'll be able to wordsmith this more. After we get Karina to really get a deep dive too. Like I'm, I'm extremely, oh, you know, I'm keeping all, all my. Every part of my brain open for what this looks like when it comes back to us again too. Okay. So that was my first thing that I had. I also, I would like, I thought I heard Dave say, I, I saw it in the update or in the highlight. It says, um, so for the funding part. I would support. No problem. I would support deleting the support for charter schools too. I think if we're not going to be specific, then don't put it in. And then for H, I also support it just being less. And I thought I, that 20%, I thought he said 15% of the 2% or 20%.
No, what I said was 15% of the 2%. Or 20% of what CSD and PEC budget.
So I, yeah, I'm, I'm, I, that's what I wanted to make sure is 15%.
The higher of either one of those. So again, if, if we, if we take a $3 million budget. 20% of the, of, of, if the 2% works out to 3 million. 20% of that would be 600,000. Okay. But, but 15%, no, it's 15% of the 2%, that's 450,000. I think that's reasonable when you're looking at that big pot. But if we only directly spend. $2 million or, or one and a half million dollars between the two of us. Why would you, why would you then say that they need, they need 33% administrator support to us? Because that's a very high administrative burden.
20% of A and B?
Yes. So it's the higher of 15% of the 2% or 20% of, of A and B above.
Well, I guess it's A through F above, right? It's all of those.
Well, yes, it would be A through F, A through F. It's, it's the total expenditure of CSD and PEC.
And I think it's whichever is lower, right? Like we're wanting them to spend the least amount of that, not the most of it.
Well. My, my thing is concession. It's a concession that it would be. my my thing is is concession. It's a concession that it would be the higher of the of the one or the other.
You're, I I wasn't doing that. I was doing that they're gonna get like whatever's the lower amount, that's what they get then. So I'm okay either way, but I like that. I I, when I heard you word it that way, I really liked it. So when I did, I noticed it wasn't typed in there correctly, so I wanted to make sure I come back to that. So I do, I I also, I support this as being the proposal, uh, moving forward.
Thank you.
Um, and then um, I wonder if in the, I I agree. So I think the the couple of things that Patty brought up with both. So the attorney part, I I hundred percent support that it should be five people instead of three. And then I think we need to work we, as in maybe more Karina, we or Juliette, like we need to really deep dive in with the procurement to not go through those same issues we went through last year. Um, I think it's super important we get that right, um, so we don't get in the same position next time. So work with com- good uh procurement on that. Hundred percent agree. With this CT, with the vocational education, the CTE number three, I wonder if we can add in there. Um, I guess I'm okay to leave it right now because also, I guess, not, whether we're delegating or not, we're not doing the duty. So I mean, it's just an uncomfortable place anyway, no matter which way we put it, whether we leave it or take it out. But I wonder if we did leave it, if we also put in there, especially if we can work on this throughout the summer, um, with PED and with Secretary Steinhaus, if we can put in there that the PEC and PED will collaborate to um, I don't want to say push, I'm trying to think of the appropriate word, to propose and support legislation to transition this to um PED permanently or something like that. And that way, it can, we can like kind of put it on notice that it should be on the PED's legislative agenda. Um, that this should be one of those things. And then that also authorizes, I think, the PEC to then have those talks with some legislators as well. Um, and see if we can try to tackle it at the sixty day session. That would be my proposal on that. And then I'm done, because I I like all the comments that were made about this.
Um, the and 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 again, one of the comments that I probably should have had in in terms of letting the secretary approve or designate the two PE uh D people on the committee. Because, you know, one of the people, the procurement officer would guide the process and advise. Procurement officers usually are not involved in the selection at all. Neither would a finance officer be involved in that. I could see the CSD director and I can see the PED council. Because we're hiring a legal person and PED council would probably have some experience and knowledge of those applicants and and would be a valuable, but leaving that the that that, those positions to the appointment of the secretary, I think would be appropriate, rather than trying to specify uh what those would be. Strong suggestion would be, one of them is, should be CSD director, clearly. But uh, that would be the secretary's discretion. Maybe the secretary wants to be on it. I don't know.
All right, commissioners, any other comments? Um, and then I guess Julia, just get clean this up one more time and we'll go ahead and.
Yeah, I just need to know if anyone disagrees with some of these suggestions. You know, like, I just changed it to quarterly, I put in this fifteen percent, you know, just these things. I'm happy to draft it in there, but I just.
Yeah, we're kind of, and we're kind of doing consensus work right now. Obviously, like, just so commissioners know, I mean, you you will have all the way up until the time we vote on it. If you really wanna, if you change your mind or you really hate something, there is still more time again. But I think this is kind of the good faith um first proposal. So I do appreciate that if you do have a strong objection to something that you kind of let it be known now so that you know, Director Travis doesn't go, take this to folks, and then we come back and like, oh, never mind, actually, this other thing after they start talking about it. But do, I I think it's important for Director Travis to know, and then for all of us to know, it still can be updated and modified all the way up until the vote. So it's kind of both. All right, Julia, I don't, yeah, I don't see anything. So I think you're, I think you're gonna be okay to make these updates and then let um Director Travis know when that's ready for them to go ahead and start their review.
And what I'd like to do is put it, put the later draft back into this working session so that we have the best one that's here. Um, okay, so I'll pull this one down, replace it, and then we'll replace it in the meeting minutes too.
That works. All right, that brings us to I don't know where my agenda is. Okay. Oh, the last thing, PED calendar. Um, so confirming that the PEC set that November seventh working session. So um, last month, we did vote on um the timeline for the new app or the renewal hearings. And we did add, um, by vote, we added a November seventh meeting in which we will, um, it will be a work session in order to give feedback on um the renewal applications. So you all can see in your um, in your Google Drive, there is a draft agenda in there now that does have that November seventh work session now on the on the agenda. Um, so tomorrow, we will be voting to approve that change to the agenda. While I also have you all here, this isn't a, the next part I'm gonna talk about, that that will be what the action item is for tomorrow. Is to adopt the calendar with the November seventh work session. Um, we also need to discuss our our August meeting um, in order to ensure CSD has plenty of time to help us do this. But right now, it is at the same, we have it scheduled um on the same weekend as the Indiana, uh Santa Fe Indian Market, which means that there will be no parking anywhere near Mayberry Hall. And also, the hotel rates will be significantly above the um state allowance of two fifteen per night. So there has been a suggestion to go ahead and move that meeting to somewhere else in the state. I did reach out um to some of the commissioners in the southern, so southeastern part of the state um, to see, you know, um, if there's like a central area over there, um, since it's a place we haven't really visited yet. And there was a suggestion that maybe Ruidoso might be a a good spot for us to maybe meet in August. Might also be a good reprieve from the heat of August to get up in the mountains. Um, so I'm gonna get, throw that out there that we consider moving our August meeting to Ruidoso. Um, and just interested in what you're all, which you think of that, or if you think Albuquerque or could you Los Cruces again? We know there's a great spot in Dona Anna County. So um, there are multiple options that we have, but I'm I'm gonna go ahead and throw out Ruidoso as another, a different option for August. Um, Commissioner Gibson?
So I'm gonna ask, have you looked at where it would be in Ruidoso? Because they they were significantly impacted by a fire just a month ago. So that could be um somewhat challenging. Agree. You're not gonna get great rates there because it's high season in Ruidoso that time of year. So that's, um, you know, I'm fine with it because I can go up and back in a day. So it's, it works for me. Um, I'm just gonna throw it out there. I'm fine with going anywhere, um, but I can probably get um U and M Valencia for nothing.
Okay.
So um, if you're looking for somewhere, um, that's a possibility. But I think going, we may very well be in for community input in Alamogordo. That part of the state anyway, but um, you know, I don't know what the facilities are at uh Ruidoso Public Schools. There's not a whole lot else up there, you know, in terms of um meeting capabilities outside of hotels.
Ruidoso is the big city in that area, right?
But there's not, you know, outside of the conferencing capabilities, there's not a lot out there.
Yeah, so it, I I guess we we could decide on is, we could try, you know, if if everyone's okay, we could try Ruidoso. If that doesn't work out, let's come up with option B. And that way, I I don't know, Karina, if you're gonna have Bev do it, or if you have someone else on staff that to start looking at this other location. But I think we're gonna kind of be, I think ideally, what we're doing is directing them to like start the process of looking into those. And then I think, like, I think if we can give them option A, Ruidoso, look and see. If it's not available, then U and M Valencia, if not Albuquerque, right? And that way, they can kind of have like these three and let us know in advance of where it ends up. So that could, that could kind of be what we end up telling them today.
I remember the director saying that Truth or Consequences was a happening place.
That would be my vote. Um, yeah, Bev's out. I was gonna say, let's, let's bring this up at the executive. Um, I I, that's, that's what she does. So when she gets back, we'll have her take a look at different places, but send me any suggestions that you have. Um, and is the commission interested in Truth or Consequences?
We could look at Glenna. You're on mute still.
Yeah, thanks a lot. I will go anywhere. Um, doesn't matter to me. And I, it'll be great to get to a new location. So, yeah, I could be down with T R C. But I think the most important thing is gonna be um having the hybrid capability for sure.
Yeah.
Roswell is another possibility. I mean, in terms of, they they have access, they do, you know, they have other things. Roads getting in and out of there, that can be a problem. They're probably not gonna have a fire problem in that area. They're not having recovery. Ruidoso is gonna be going through recovery for months and months and months, or years. They're gonna have recovery for years. So it's not something that's gonna be over with, I don't think, by August. Rather than putting a burden, I know it would help them, you know, some of the locals, if if we did have a meeting. But like, like Commissioner Gibson says, that's, that's high, high uh vacation time. And they get a lot of people that come in there and pay very high rates. Um, you know, Angel, um, the um, what's the Mescalero cities of, um, what's their?
Into the mountain gods.
Into the mountain gods. I mean, that's, that can be expensive. That can be over two hundred dollars a night there, you know. Uh, so uh, Re- Re- Roswell's a possibility, T R C's a possibility. Uh, accommodations in T R C may be a little bit of an issue because, you know, that that's the other thing. T R C is a a vacation spot, you know. Even though the lake doesn't have a lot of water in it, a lot of people like to go down there and camp and everything. So sometimes facilities could be an issue down there too. So, but I'm I'm open pretty much anywhere.
So I can ask what San Juan College would charge?
All right, so um I think what's what's helpful is that all of us know August will not be in Santa Fe. It will be somewhere else. We're gonna look for somewhere with hybrid capabilities and making sure it's not that there's, you know, enough hotel space for a couple of folks for less than two hundred dollars a night. And um, we'll try to, we'll, we'll make that work. So we will, we'll go ahead and discuss that in a executive committee meeting with Bev and Karina moving forward. And we'll try to get back to everyone to let you know the location as quickly as possible for that August meeting. But I think for right now, for sure, it's not gonna be in Santa Fe. It will be somewhere else in the state. Um, which is really sad because we'll have just gotten our brand new Mayberry Hall in July, and then right away, we're not there. So, but that's okay. Uh, Glenna, do you wanna, do you have something to say?
Yeah, just have a quick question. So Patty, does the old Santa Fe Inn raise their rates for Indian Market?
Oh, they use, oh, absolutely. They um, they're, they're using La Fonda.
Oh, the La Fonda rates? I knew they were bought out. But I thought if we made reservations this early,
you know, if you, if you try to ma- if you try to make them, even if you're out on Cereos, it's costing over two hundred dollars a night for any place out on Cereos. Because it's, you know, it's make it or break it season.
Right. Okay, thanks.
All right, well, that is it for today. Thank you all so much, and I will, we will see you all tomorrow at nine.